I'd like to call the town of White Springs regular council meeting to order Tuesday, August 8th, 2023 at 6:33 PM. Please stand for the invitation and pledge.
Dear heaven and father, we come before you today to praise and magnify your name. This is the day that you have made and we are obligated to rejoice and we are glad in it. We thank you now for the town council of White Springs. For to God that you will take us to higher heights and deeper depths of you, that everybody play the role that you have given us here, that we will be the city that sits upon the hill and the light that shall not be hid. And we thank you for every community member here that is here today. Lord asks us to do business as decent and in order on tonight, that we will give your name glory, honor, and praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They can see that. Wrong call. Kizi Birch, president. Lenny Poe?
Here.
Mary Berry?
Here.
Jacqueline Williams?
Nada Rivers is present. We have a caller who will continue with the agenda.
Any additions, additions, or amendments to the agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to add an addition to number five for presentation. Chad Mathis with the Hamilton County Development Authority Economic Development Director.
Okay. Any other additions, additions, or amendments? Senior Barry, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I, Mary Berry, approve your amendment as amended for Chad Mathis.
Can I get a second on the motion?
I keep the vote second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any citizens from the floor, first? No? Alright, let's go back. I need to add something else to the agenda. Uh, we'll do presentation, um, of proclamation by Elder Dr. Spencer Lofton, senior. So can I get a motion for that amendment to the agenda?
I, Jacqueline Williams, move to be amend the current agenda.
A second, please.
I keep the vote second.
Any, any discussion? Alright. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, so, no citizens from the floor with our presentation, Mr. Chad Mathis?
Thank y'all for having me today. Again, my name's Chad Mathis. Um, I'd like to, uh, mayor, um, again, thank you. Uh, I'd like to thank Miss Audrey for working me in here as well. And, uh, so, I just wanted to come introduce myself. I've given y'all my card. Um, I'm quite familiar with, with White Springs. I've been down in the river in Cendoo's, gone down the rivers. I've been, uh, a lot, spent a lot of time in Nutrien, uh, as well as Bendville plantation. Um, I've, I've been, uh, the fat bellies, I can assure you, uh, I can assure you I've been to the hardware store here.
I will.
Uh, and to the bike, uh, swinging, uh, bike. I did a rock. I think that's what it's termed.
I did a rock.
I did a rock. Um, and so, uh, just wanted to introduce myself to y'all. I know y'all have some economic development decisions coming up, uh, because of your workshop that's coming up on the fifteenth, that possibly, uh, help, uh, your tax base and help the community grow. And I would like to be a resource for y'all, um, show y'all some love. Uh, we've been doing stuff in other areas of the county and, uh, I'd like to, uh, help, uh, White Springs out if there's opportunities where y'all see, uh, those resources might be, be tapped. Um, in addition to that, I just simply wanted to, may I approach the, uh, just give y'all, uh, some information here on how local economies grow and expand. Uh, and hopefully, uh, y'all will be able to benefit from some of this information and, and also, uh, use it to, uh, help White Springs, uh, potentially grow in the future, uh, as well as, uh, possibly get some affordable housing for the community and things like that. It's really hard to recruit businesses, uh, to the community without affordable housing, as you all know and imagine. So, would, uh, I really don't have any other, uh, requests for information from y'all, but I'd be glad to try to answer any questions if anybody had any. My office is in Jasper. My door is always open. It's first door on the right. I get all kind of people coming in there because I'm the first door. I can assure you, uh, they're asking for the chip program.
Yes.
I'm, I'm the first door they come to, and that's fine.
Yeah.
They, uh, they get directly down to the right side, so, um, and with the drug program, them, me, and them. We, we have a good time down there, so.
Are you going to activate the watch, Chad?
I can. Um, I knew that it was, uh, turned to workshop. Um, I really don't have, you know, any questions for the developers. I've already seen their presentation, but, uh, I'm interested.
He's looking at the citizens and want to ask some questions, especially on the Miami area.
Yeah, so. They, they're asking us for money, uh, to help with some of the infrastructure, with the project as well. So, I'm interested in it, um, from that perspective. Hopefully, uh, I know y'all have some, uh, utilities ordering sewer in that area. And hopefully, they would want to develop on the areas that, that maybe don't require such intensive utilities initially. Uh, and that would give time for them to be placed in place, assuming it moves forward.
Any questions for him there? Alright, thank you, Mr. Spencer.
Yes, ma'am. I can email that document to y'all as well. Um, and I have several other documents related to downtown, uh, redevelopment, et cetera, that I'd like to share with y'all as well. So, I'll make sure I get, with Miss Audrey, get all y'all's emails. I, I had, um, I had the wrong email addresses. Um, y'all may have changed those from, from what they were maybe last year or somehow.
Some of the council changes.
I, I got, um, I got this information from North Central Florida Regional Planning Council. And then they're booked with.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Alright, Mr. Spencer Lofton?
Okay. So those who don't know me, I'm Spencer Lofton. I'm, um, one of the new pastors over there. Sounds heavy. Uh, so just moving around some ministries. Um, I'm also a professor at HBIU, which is Heart Bible International University. We have two, um, college, uh, two buildings here in Florida. One in Orlando, another one in outskirts of the Celine area. Two in Texas, one in Harper, Connecticut, and three overseas over in Africa. Uh, so, um, I teach a course in, um, addiction counseling as a bachelor's course. And I teach a master's course in marketing and advertising. Um, this year, I'm being honored with the Presidential Lifetime Achievement Award among the 2023 people. My chancellor, which is the boss of the, the university, asked me just to see if I can, uh, acquire some proclamations to, uh, kind of commemorate the people that were receiving the lifetime achievement award. And as you saw, it was, I think it said sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven.
Yes, and I'm one of the sixty-seventh. Um, to get a lifetime achievement award is a minimum of twenty-five years of community service. And it's signed by the President of the United States, as you see here. You got the president, Vice President Harris, it's, uh, picture on it. And they sent it in a nice, a very nice, uh, it's huge. Uh, what do you call that, uh?
Knuckle D M?
I'll go with that. But it's behind glass and it has, it's all matted and everything. And your proclamation will go right in, in there to the, to the left, I think she said. And it, it'll, um, basically commemorate that. And what we're asking is that you name the, just one day out of the year, uh, Community Service Day in honor of those that have served twenty-five years. I, myself, I put in forty. So, uh, that's why I'm being honored this year. So, with that said, yeah, I'm dating myself. I'm getting my six. Young man, okay, I go. But yes, um, and that's what's happening in twenty-three, 2023 Presidential Lifetime Achievement Award. And that's what I'm requesting. And if you guys will be able to approve that, I will be so happy to be able to get back to my, um, chancellor and let her know that that's what's happening. Also, last thing I want to say is, uh, I did talk to your mayor. Can I have an access?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, uh, the king of Uganda, um, is coming to the local area. And I wanted your mayor to honor us by coming out and having a meeting with him. He basically wants to find out how y'all do what y'all do and, um, you know, maybe take some more ideas back to his, his country. And that's basically what it is.
Yeah, me and Jacqueline will be sure we're there. And you'll give us a common date at home. I mean, we got a date, but there's some.
Got the date locked in, we just don't, you know, 'cause I want to put it in a really nice place.
Right.
You know, because after all, we got a king.
Right.
Y'all seem coming to America, so, so, it's not gonna be like that, because he, he really dresses down. He's really, uh, uh, a really nice guy. If you got any questions, I'm here to ask, to answer your questions.
What is the date?
What is the date?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, that's very.
It's all, the, the date for her or the date for the event? The event is on August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, and we ask it for that day, August twenty-seventh. We set aside here in White Springs as Community Service Day. And that's what the proclamation is all for, to set that day aside. But the meeting is on the third first. Yes, the king is coming. You know what? I come to think of it, um, if I could arrange it, how many of you guys would like to be there? Would the council want to go? You know, I was, I was thinking the mayor's, but he might want to pick everybody's for him.
That could be nice, uh, all of us.
Don't y'all have a conflict going on at eight?
So. August thirty-first is that our Florida State City.
Florida State City.
Yeah, we got the Florida State City dinner being.
So if I change it to September first, it wouldn't be a problem?
To win?
September first.
No, no, that wouldn't be a problem. We just have that.
We're doing butt jobs, so that's the next week.
Well, that's not the first week, yeah.
September first is. Is it okay with y'all, the rest of the county?
September first?
September first is a Friday.
Yeah, that'll work.
Okay, alright, she'll, she'll probably want to thank you guys personally, anyway. And it's Dr. Doran Mattach is the chancellor. And she's an apostle. What question would you have?
Congratulations.
That's the best part, the things I ask my students, what question?
Congratulations.
Thank you. She's referring to me being ordained as a pastor on the twenty-third of last month.
Yeah. Congratulations. I had no idea. We walk in. Alright, so I have a proclamation here that I'm gonna read, and then I'll ask the council to adopt it. Uh, it's a proclamation, City of White Springs, Florida, Elder Dr. Spencer C. Lofton, senior. In recognition of your many years of dedicated service on, to your fellow man, whereas you served your community tirelessly and with excellent results, and whereas you distinguish yourself by connecting with your local church to serve in a capacity commensurate to your experience. And whereas you represented yourself in such a manner others are motivated to follow your example. And whereas your example has opened a door of opportunity for you to earn a Presidential Lifetime Achievement Award. Now therefore, I, Nada Rivers, Mayor of the City of White Springs, Florida, in the county of Hamilton, due hereby, May twenty-seventh day of August, two thousand twenty-three, as Community Service Day here in White Springs, Florida, in honor and recognition of each recipient of the two thousand twenty-three Presidential Lifetime Achievement Award. In witness whereof, I hereby extend my hand and cause the seal of the City of White Springs, Florida, to be a fix. We're gonna have to retype this and put it down to county. And White Springs.
We want to make sure too, we're specifically honoring him for doing here.
Right.
Those are gonna be attached.
Yes, okay. So can I get a motion to adopt the proclamation for the life, Presidential Lifetime Achievement Award for this Elder Dr. Spencer C. Lofton, senior?
I, Jacqueline Williams, move that we adopt a proclamation for Elder Dr. Spencer Lofton, senior, for August twenty-seventh, being the Community Service Day.
And can I get a second on the motion?
I, Mary Berry, is sitting.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, congratulations. And we'll just change these little.
Yes, true. I got it.
Yeah, 'cause still want, I don't want to sign it too soon.
Then I got to go see a woman, so.
Okay. Alright, so, moving on to approval of the minutes from the July eleventh, twenty twenty-three Town Hall meeting.
You have a correction to the minutes? The correction to the minutes will be the meeting start time was called at order at six thirty.
Six thirty.
Oh, yeah. Anything else? Alright, can I get a motion to approve the minutes as, uh, for the regular council meetings on July eleventh as amended?
I, Mary Berry.
Not a motion to approve the minutes?
To approve the minutes.
With the correction.
With the correction.
Can I get a second?
I keep the vote second.
Any, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, old business. Under old business, the only thing we have is a meeting on the zoning workshop. That workshop is next Tuesday, August fifteenth at six PM here in the town council chambers. We only have three citizens in the audience right now, so y'all can get, we help us get the word out too. Please, so that we also know what's going on.
You're welcome.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Lofton. Alright, under new business, we have meetings to remember. The budget workshop is dated August twenty-second and August twenty-ninth. Both held, both held on Tuesdays at six thirty. The first proposed budget hearing is Wednesday, September sixth at six thirty. And the final budget hearing is Tuesday, September nineteenth at six thirty. Can I get a motion to approve all these dates for the budget workshops? The first proposed budget hearing and the final budget hearing?
I, Jacqueline Williams, move to be approve the following dates, August twenty-second and twenty-ninth for budget workshop. September the sixth for first proposed budget hearing. September the nineteenth, twenty twenty-three for final budget hearing.
Can I get a second on the motion?
Okay, six o'clock, six thirty.
Six thirty, all of you, six thirty minutes. I get a.
I stop.
Okay, and any discussion on the motion, please?
Who, who hopes to make motion?
Jack. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, departmental and administrative comments, I'm gonna start with it. Terry, before I forget him and leave him out. They don't put on here.
I promise I will put it on here.
This year.
Thank you for the consideration, but no, I, I don't have any comments, but I'm happy to answer any questions. I do understand that Mr. Stubbs has been reaching out to me guys and trying to, if you leave your meetings with him with any questions, please, I'm just a phone call away.
Okay.
Uh, I have reviewed some of the materials he's been sharing and things like that. I don't have any concerns. Um, it, it's new for, for everybody. If anything, please, please, please call. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Um, public? No comments? Speaking after a whole piece meet. Alright, um, Ray is not here. Steve is not here. You got any updates for them or no?
No, um, we're very quiet. The only thing that is, that's with, uh, as far as, um, the fire department is that, um, Mr. Man suspended emergency services throughout the county. But I'll meet with him tomorrow at, uh, ten thirty, and we'll discuss that. And if something else is going to affect everyone's insurance, A I S O. So we're gonna have a meeting tomorrow. He's gonna come here for us to discuss that.
Ms. George, I do have a question. So since he actually suspended the, um, EMS services, who is providing EMS services for Hamilton County at this time?
To my knowledge, there isn't enough. But that's, that's just for what I know. I don't know more tomorrow when we get.
And since we only have three citizens on the floor, um, if, if, if in the end you do have an emergency, you do still call nine-one-one and then you actually request dispatch to send Columbia County.
Okay.
They will come.
They will come. Because at this point, that's the only thing that we are able to provide since Hamilton County suspended the services. So don't try to get in your car and do something emergent if it's an emergency. Just call nine-one-one dispatch and just request from Columbia County. It's actually closer anyway.
Thank you. Any agreements?
No, other than that, um, they, all of us dispatched up and, um, everything that we are going to discuss will be this budget. So other than that, um.
Another community body?
Counsel. I'm honestly, now, for a thing, during my ice cream social, I had a vendor approach me about possibly donating a huge Christmas tree. And they tell me that Lake City have one, and Labo have one, Justin have one, and they would love to see one in White Springs. I haven't gotten all the information as to what they will actually provide, if it's just a tree and a person decorate. And even if it's us decorating, I feel that, you see, this is White Springs. Everybody could come together and have a little family night, the kids, go and put their ornaments on the tree. And so just the thought out that I'm working with someone about donating a huge Christmas tree, as well as, um, asking if we, everything go through, that we possibly put it at the veterans for.
We normally where they put one, and so I don't know if, I don't know if on that tree that they used to put there every year, because it used to be, um, Tom or his wife would always pick it up to remember, not be, um, some of the C S O people.
Yes.
But they had, they did do it last year. That was the first year we made it happen. So I don't know if that was their pretty good tree, because we don't know where one is either. We don't have one, so that would be good if somebody did go make a lot of.
I'm still talking back to the fourth to see actually what they're gonna do. And so I just wanted to convey it to everyone that we, like, uh.
I feel like if they give us a tree, each one of us to buy them some lights, we could donate the lights and decorations. I got decorations that I don't, you can. I'm watching them here. I mean, that would be fun to do, and like, maybe we can do even again, like, you know, toy thing for the kids with their names on the tree.
Yeah, and even like, so many kids, even a lot there, possibly maybe do a squad of them to gather the keys. Everybody just, you know, get their needs, nothing keys, and make ornaments, just, you know, go to the tree and just hang it up.
Why?
Anything else?
Tell us about the ice cream social. I saw, while I passed on it, it was he said his album. Yes, awesome.
It was a huge success. Um, I had a lot of vendors. In total, I gave up five hundred seventeen good bags. Um, a lot of things, some vendors contacted me that I never even heard of. And they asked to be there for everything with, with face payers and I go, it was just, it was awesome. It was a blessing.
There was so many, I almost had a rake coming out of that. It was like, see, run the car part on the side of the road to you kind of get it. I tried to tell the officer to move up there, so he could have it, but I didn't want to give you. You know, I didn't want to do, so I was like, I'm gonna leave it alone. Let me just ease out in the street.
Hey, that was me. You can interrupt me.
Yeah, that wasn't my job.
This year was seventeen, um, years. Next year will be eighteen. Um, I always do it this Saturday before I went to town to go back to school. So my dates, I wouldn't know until the actual school comes to come up next year.
But I will be back next year.
Thank you.
Anything else? Lenny, have you done that, Ms.? Mayor?
No.
I don't have any. Anybody else? Nothing? Alright, so, we deserve six fifty-seven. I want to call the White Springs Town Council zoning workshop to order Tuesday, August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three at six thirty. Wrong call. Uh, Kizi Birch, here. Lenny Poe, here. Mary Berry. Jacqueline Williams, present. Nada Rivers, present. We will continue with the workshop. Zoning workshop. Uh, Mr. Brandon, I'll let you start off. First, if you would, you know, before you introduce yourself to everyone, then, um, explain the difference in the, the different zones, like residential high density, because some of the citizens may not know the exact definition of what it means.
And the mayor, Colonel Prichard. Uh, Brandon Stubbs, I'm the senior of the player for North Florida Professional Services. Here representing the town this evening. Um, you know, uh, kind of grab on my history. I've spent the last twenty years in local government planning. I did, um, city planning for the city of Lake City, uh, city planning for the city of Washington for eight years. And most recently, the community development coordinator for Columbia County. Um, I would also like to introduce, you know, Mr. Peschall, the council, he's in audience. And, and, probably speaking a little bit. But to go through some of the different, um, land use and zoning districts that were proposed tonight. As you can see through the map, there's four different parcels. I'm sorry, I was trying to look at the efficiency, but if the council wants to, I could turn them around for the audience.
Yeah, we have a map.
Just want to turn that around for you. Um, the parcel on the top is parcel A. I know it's kind of hard to see the outline. Uh, parcel A is, uh, possibly six point four four acres.
Can you show them just points where the.
Right there on the top. Uh, parcel B is a ribbon strip that's, um, on the back. It's a thirty-three point seven five acre parcel. Uh, parcel C is the proposed commercial, uh, parcel. That is a fifteen point three three acre parcel, and then the parcel D, which is on the south end, is five point oh seven acres. So to give you an idea, uh, the parcel in the north is proposed for a residential high density, uh, future land use designation, which allows for twenty two million per acre. Uh, the proposed zoning on that is residential multi-family two. And under that R M F two allows a maximum of fifteen million per acre. So even though your land use allows for forty, the R M F two only allows for a maximum of fifteen. Um, parcel B, that is proposed residential medium density, that's up to eighty million per acre. But the proposed zoning is residential single-family three, which allows for a maximum of seventy-five hundred square foot lots, which actually works out to five point eight million per acre. And that's on the thirty-three point, um, seventy-five acre parcel A, parcel B. Uh, parcel C is proposed for commercial land use, for the commercial general zone district. To give you some examples of what is permissible in the commercial general zone district, would be any kind of general retail type establishment, office, medical facilities, essential living facilities, um, doral hair salon, beauty parlor, um, you know, any kind of general retail of that. It's not heavy manufacturing. It's not, uh, heavy commercial. Um, it doesn't allow for things like car dealerships and things like that. It's just your basic general retail. The piece on the bottom, parcel D, which is the five acre piece, again, that's residential high density, um, with a proposal of residential multi-family two. So again, that would be limited to fifteen billion per acre. Um, I kind of want to go through, uh, the development process. I know there's a lot of misconceptions about what the development process entails. Uh, the development process is actually a pretty long process. So your land use, your zoning is actually a very small portion of what the. your land use, your zoning is actually a very small portion of what the development process entails. And what the land use and zoning process allows is for a developer or landlord to actually come in and actually apply to, for something. So what I like to look at is if you have a restaurant, and then that restaurant only serves cheeseburgers. Well, we all like cheeseburgers, but some they might want a turkey sandwich or roast beef sandwich. So if you petition the restaurant owner for, to say you ordered items on the menu, and the restaurant owner agrees, now you have more choices to come to the restaurant and say, yeah, today we have more turkey sandwich, tomorrow we have hamburger, next day we have roast beef sandwich. It's, it's the same way. You're only now being able to, uh, apply or ask for things, um, over broader risk. Um, so that's kind of what this step is. And the next step would be, you know, market study. Um, there's, uh, a whole bunch of, uh, preliminary, uh, studies that have been done as far as market feasibility, wellness study, environmental study. Um, there's coordination with F W C, Department of Environmental Protection, Soil and River Water Management District, the local government body here. Um, so you have a lot of, you're, you're what I like to call the planning steps. Uh, once all those get ironed out, um, and you have all your environmental studies and everything else, you know, but I consider this actual full development process in general, as far as like your permitting process. Now would be water river water management, well, well and permitting. Um, that would be your local jurisdictional, uh, subdivision approval, which consists of preliminary plot approval, construction plan approval, uh, development of the actual site, um, like streets, roads, everything. Um, local county or local jurisdictional approval of the streets, final plot approval. You got, um, D and P F W C approval. Um, if there are, like, let's say, goat turtles, something I mentioned last time. If there are goat turtles, that will have to be permitted with F W C. The developer owner will have to pay a fine for each goat turtle that's on that site. Not only will they have to pay a fine, but they will have to coordinate through a licensed facility that is licensed with F W C to relocate those goat turtles. And so they'll be moved to a, some, some section where, depending on where F W C feels the need is. And that licensed facility will, um, relocate each one of those animals. Any of the animals that would be on the endangered species list, or, um, that's for anyone by F W C. So again, there's fines, there's permitting, and there's a relocation cost. So I mean, that can cost, you know, fifty, hundred thousand dollars itself, depending on the number of, uh, species that you have out there. Um, you know, once you get through, uh, wetland permitting, the, if there's any environmental, uh, sensitive features like, uh, for your stormwater or F W C permitting, you still have to get your local jurisdictional permitting, which would be all for any kind of, um, building permits, um, you know, construction permits, any site and home plan approval. Um, overall, there's probably going to be at least three or four more times that the developer would have to come back and forth this board for approval on things. And, um, every that reaches every from subdivision approval or site plan approval. Um, now, if it's a building permit, that obviously goes through the building department, but still, your permit that they have to, um, receive. So what are uses are permitted? Um, well, you got two areas that propose for multifamily, multifamily residential, multifamily two. Those two areas that allow single-family dwellings, duplex dwellings, and multifamily dwellings, which could be anything that's, um, like a townhome or a condo type unit. Um, the type of what, whether it be, uh, an apartment or a townhome or condo or townhouse, will depend on market study. So, um, once the land use and zoning is approved, then they move into the market study, and then do a study of the local character, the, the local, um, feasibility for what kind of housing is needed within this area. So let's say, if they do a market study, and they determine that apartments are necess, are warranted, because there's nowhere to rent, and people need places to rent in town, then they would probably develop, you know, apartments for people to build and rent. They may look and say, oh, you know what? Duplexes are better. People around here, um, may need to rent, or they may do a duplex subdivision, where you can actually buy a portion of the duplex. Um, just depends on what the market study, uh, shows. Uh, parcel B is a single-family district, so that will be single-family, uh, residential housing. That would be, um, your typical single-family, um, housing, um, you know, without the size, offering, everything would, uh, again, depend on what the market study shows. Now, going through the commercial general area, what uses to build out there, which is basically general commercial retail type resource establishments. Uh, no heavy commercial, no industrial, no main factory, and that kind of stuff. So be restaurants, or maybe assistive living facilities, or could be a little shopping center, sometimes like a strip center. Um, and, and somebody as well as important. I mean, currently, White Springs does not have anywhere for the kids or the youth coming up to live. I mean, if you're going to try to live around everywhere, they'll move out. There's nowhere for them to live. So if there's nowhere provided for them to live, they're just going to move away. And so this provides an opportunity for a place to live, also a place to work. You know, if there's assistive living facilities here, that's a place for your parents. Keep them from, or keep yourself from driving thirty miles in thirty minutes, then there's assistive living facility. Um, you know, if there are apartments here, if there's kids, opportunities of, uh, rent apartments, or duplex, or a townhome, or, you know, some, some form of multifamily that's not as expensive as like starting out with a single-family residence, or, you know, maybe another home. So, um, it, it was a commercial, I mean, if, if there's a strip center, we all know that starting businesses are very expensive. And if you have to go through all the site, the engineering, site builder process, you're sure for a new commercial selling us millions of dollars. I mean, just to risk that kind of money on a, a new business is, is not, not feasible. You can't do it. But, you know, say someone has a little barbecue stand, and they just sell, um, barbecue at their home in this road. I mean, they're getting busy, busy, busy. And all of a sudden, now they need a place, like, man, I need a place to do this, and I need a store find somewhere where I can have my customers come in, sit down, and, you know, enjoy their meal. Well, if there's a strip center for somewhere where they can lease, and now they're paying maybe a couple thousand dollars a month for a leased unit versus having to spend, you know, any of the dollars developing the site, that becomes a reality. And, you know, same as like a beauty salon, or, um, hair salon, nail salon. It's hard to open those types of businesses if you don't have anywhere to open to begin with. And so the commercial areas will provide that, um, for, you know, future. I know there was concern about utilities. Um, and utilities is always a concern, but this is not like, you know, a project that's going to happen overnight. Certainly, if the land use and zoning is approved tonight, I can tell you, they're not going to be breaking ground anytime soon. It's just going to take a year and a half, two years to get all the permitting even before they can break them out. So you're talking about time, you're talking about probably, you know, fifteen to twenty-five year build out of this site. And it might even be longer than that, fully built out. So that gives plenty of time to work with the developers, um, seek local or state funding to grants appropriations. And certainly, you know, I'd be happy to work with y'all on stuff like that, because uh, we work with local jurisdictions all the time, and we give, um, state appropriations and grant funds for water super plants and expansions all the time for local jurisdictions. So that's certainly something that we could actually help y'all with if, if it came down to it. But you know, this is something where you have enough capacity now, where you could get projects started, you could get development started. And as those projects are under permitting, already been in the planning phase for new, new expansions to water wastewater. And you could probably get it done to, sometimes they, you know, local jurisdictions get it done as zero cost of debt, or to their, their, their citizens. They get, uh, funding through appropriations and grants. On Oklahoma County, just got one. And they got pretty much a hundred percent funding for a brand new, um, wastewater treatment plant. And it's not impossible. And, and the, and the good thing about that is, is the state, they love giving out money for things, projects like that, because anytime the state can get people a will, receptive, or have, you know, provide community facilities, all that for, um, the citizens, and get them where they're not on wells and stuff, it's better for the environment. That's better for growth for all the county, some cities, and everybody's a whole. Um, I think I've kind of addressed, um, everything that I have. I'll, I'll turn over to, uh, Mr. Patrick and Mr. Kamano, and, um, that way, you know, if y'all have any questions for us, I'll be.
I just want to say, before you sit down, I'm going to explain parcels A, B, C, and D to the citizens. But either if you or even Ray making explaining even better, like exactly what, where it is in that block. Cause they're not, just looking at a map, the average person is not going to know what we're talking about.
Alright, so for the benefit of the audience, uh, to give you an idea of where we're at here, as you can see, um, there's parcel A, B, C, D. Um, this is George Street right here. This is forty-one. The curves around here, that's the railroad tracks. That's the marathon station right here, and that's a little still storage. Are y'all familiar with that? Yes, sir.
How much of that is in town limits and how much of it's in county?
Right, right.
Oh, it's all, this is all within the town limits.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
According to all the maps we have.
I was about to say, according to all the jurisdictional maps, it is all within the town limits. Yes.
Yeah. There's, um.
So what, I, I just have a question. What parts do you all think are not in the town limits?
Cause parcel A definitely a part of C Z.
I, I'm just going to say.
Because once you pass the map on, it's definitely city, that's the city limits, and that is storage.
There is a parcel that was owned by a gentleman that he did have.
So the, the mini storage was D annexed, but that didn't affect this property.
This is the town limits here. This is actually the town's official land use and zoning guidance here. But the, the, that's not here, also just probably is here. So everything in Steen and Foster, uh, since I'm, I'm, y'all, y'all, um, y'all, I mean.
Yeah, according.
There's some other map that shows something different. I haven't seen, but this was everything else provided to us.
Okay, so can you show them again, like, what is forty, how went forty-one, so they'll know exactly what part.
And this, this.
Where Diamond Street is.
That, there's yellow line here, and a thick yellow line is forty-one. And this is your cone around the corner, coming north. Uh, George Street's right here, so, right here, White Springs City Hall. Um, you have the library right here.
Diamond Street.
Uh, Diamond Street's right here, and then one hundred sixty-fourth runs on the back one of it.
Parcel is only commercial?
It's along four forty-one, it says right here. So this is already commercial. And then you got the commercial here, so it just continues that commercial ribbon. So there's already a strip of commercial comes through, and then, and then this is the only piece that's not commercial currently. So that would just kind of take that commercial connection to existing portion parcel. Any other questions, or? Does anybody familiar with?
You've got a different map that shows that that's all in the town limits. Is that what you?
Correct. I have a copy of their official land use and zoning.
Okay, so all of that's in the town.
Correct. The only piece that is out is, um, this piece right here that's something about this gentleman, he, he annexed that parcel. But it actually goes all the way back, uh, um, past the state, uh, Steen and Foster State Park. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
How, what, are you all talking about here?
Well, Diamond Street, so you can see this is where Broad Street comes in, curves, and Diamond Street's right here. It's just this little piece right here that's along Diamond Street. But this whole piece right here is, uh, parcel they have.
Oh, I live on this street. That's not a problem.
Right here?
And the parcel deep, that's like you're talking about where townhomes?
Yeah, that would be like townhomes or duplexes. Something like that.
That's right across the street from, a second back.
Oh, let me say one word. Since we're on the development process on this page, it says a developer isn't going to build housing that is not characteristic of the neighborhood, undervalued, or overvalued. The developer is going to develop, develop housing tailored to that community. Um, so I know you mentioned some single-family housing, which that is, but where like the townhome is going to fit into the. Yeah, can we say except the holiday?
Well, townhomes and multifamily, actually, townhomes and single-family dwellings fit into the same category. Because they're technically considered single-family dwellings. They're just single-family attached dwellings versus single-family detached ones. And when you, when you look at the characteristics of the neighborhood, um, you're looking at more than just are they mobile homes, or single-family, or townhomes, you're looking at the price range too. So you're looking at what the people can afford, and what are their needs? So, you know, they're like, currently, there's no apartments, uh, so.
No, that's not true. There are apartments right across the street from me.
There's not a apartment complex, like a, you know, typical apartment complex.
Ah, excuse me, those are apartments across the street from me.
Please, please don't make me think. Um, so providing places for people to actually go and rent, that would be able to provide, like, for a community that they will be able to come in and afford. There's not very many rental opportunities within the city. So be able to provide those, or be able to provide duplexes, or townhomes, uh, whatever the market says is needed, is a characteristic of the neighborhood. So would you provide something that is needed that community, that is, uh, one of the friendship characteristics? Not be characteristic of, uh, you know, existing uses, it can be characteristic of the, uh, market, market, or the need, um, in any multiple different things.
My name?
Oh, yes.
I would like to public the objection to the gentleman's statement that there are no apartments in this town. That is not a true statement.
That's true.
And I would like that recorded as a public fact. There are apartments in this city.
You are right.
Good evening, Mayor. Hi, what's up, Matt?
Yeah.
Uh, my name's Patrick Kowalski. I'm a land use lawyer. Um, I've been helping with the project. Uh, first, I want to thank the town clerk, uh, for helping me out, helping to gather information. Um, there was a lot of documentation we needed, and I think she had something about fourteen separate emails to get it all, so I appreciate her, um, helping out. Um, not unlike, uh, Brandon, I also represent small local governments. I've done that throughout my career. All in permitting, land use, environmental issues. So representing, uh, it's very similar to yours, but sitting in the same type of seat your town attorney is. Um, I think the unique part, I watched your previous meeting, because I wasn't here. Um, I think the unique part of getting this project started is you have no planning department. Uh, you have no planner. Uh, normally, uh, folks like myself and Brandon and the rest would sit down with those people and talk about this project, and discuss the impacts to the community, both positive, potentially negative, or through some of those issues, but that just doesn't exist here. So Brandon's had to do most of that work. Um, you know, I've got a, a giant binder, which I know you all have a ton of information. So Brandon's had to do most of that work, um, you know, I've got a giant binder, which I know you all have a ton of information, um, because we've had to do that upfront to put all this together. You have no planning and zoning board, which your charter calls for, so that, that's another wrinkle, we're having to kind of do this in a different way. Um, and having represented local boards, I appreciate the fact that you're having a workshop, you're taking public input, uh, you're trying to be transparent, as Brandon mentioned, this is a multi-year project. This is going to take a long time to, to fully build out and, and Brandon and his team are going to be in front of you on multiple occasions for different approvals and different parts of the project. They have provided the data, the concurrency analysis, uh, they've provided the competent substantial evidence, uh, the petitions are consistent with your comprehensive plan, your future land use map, your zoning atlas. Um, and I've reviewed all of this and, and agree with the finance, doesn't mean you have to, I'm just telling you, I've, I've kind of gone back through when that, when your question came up, is this all in the town, excuse me, the town limits? Um, my research indicates that it is, that's one of the first things I looked at, what's the jurisdiction here, who we need to go to for approval? Um, this is just the first step, as Brandon mentioned, this is just a zoning and comp plan question, this is not building permits, this is not how many units. They'll have to come back in front of you for, uh, buffers, setbacks, infrastructure, utilities, driveways, access, um, all of those things from other agencies, wetlands, stormwater. Um, that's all going to have to be dealt with, uh, that's not in front of you today, that's not, this is about, this is, uh, I hate to say simple, because it's not simple, it's, it's important, but we're just talking about rezoning here. And we've identified the parcels, they've separated out the different uses that they propose, doesn't mean they're going to happen, doesn't mean they're going to happen, uh, the way we think of it today. That's all going to be subject to further review. Um, this is a multi-use catalyst project, this will add new housing stock to the town, a mixture of housing stock that you currently don't have a lot of. It's going to provide additional property tax revenue to the town, uh, you've got a lot of vacant, just kind of sitting there property, so put it on the tax rolls. Uh, part of your charter says that the planning and zoning board is to provide for growth of the town. Uh, this is providing the growth opportunity for the town in a, in a multitude of ways, um, and Brandon talked about this. The applicant wants to hear from you and the community, they're going to be here for a long time, the only way a project like this works, if everybody has input and everybody's on board with what's happening. Uh, again, this is a multi-year project, it's, um, going to bring significant and appropriate growth to the town, um, and significant revenue to the town. Uh, I encourage you to ask questions, to hear from Brandon, to hear from your constituents, and work with us to make this a great project for the town and a catalyst for the town of White Springs. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I just want to ask one question, can I ask you one?
Yeah, I wanted to see if, if, I just want first to meet your castle's.
Who did you submit your rezonation application to?
I'll explain if that's okay, my name's Megan Carter, I'm also with Brandon, uh, representing North Florida Professional Services. And I'll say that I personally presented those petitions at your meeting back in September, um, or September or October, I can't remember the dates. But I, I tried to work through staff to get applications, which would be a standard procedure for this type of thing, and you didn't have applications, you didn't have a process. So that was our only way to do that, I came to that meeting personally, presented them to the public record, um, so that's how we submitted those applications.
So let me ask you, just for a question, you're the one that came and then we asked what were you going to put there and you say you didn't know?
Yes, I said that.
Okay, that's why we didn't have, because we didn't, we don't know what you was going to put there, we didn't know, okay, just, I just want to clarify that.
So, uh, again, that those applications for zoning and, um, and land use were not technically applications, they were petitions, which we submitted, you know, as a, as a prior public record in that meeting. So, yeah, at that time, you know, we knew that we were asking for the rezonations, for the different uses, for the multi-family on the two parcels, the resident, the single-family and the commercial. But as far as details of specifics, you know, I, I didn't know that and I, I can't even commit to that tonight, so hopefully that clarifies.
Yeah, I remember when you came in and re-asked, I know the council had, so what did y'all think, and then when you said we didn't know, and they said they couldn't blindly just approve anything, I just want to clarify, I just want to make sure that's what it is.
And so you're still saying tonight, you can't clarify as to what would actually be filled on any of these parcels?
No, and that's, that's not what's being, you know, decided on, and that's what they both advised that.
Well, we'd just like to know if you knew that, because of course you don't have to answer, I'm sure you're not going to know. Alright, um... Anybody want to comment on questions? Alright, go ahead, talk to you.
Who is the contractor, do you think you're always sure for someone, who is the contractor?
Say, come up here, we can hear on the mics or whatever they're reporting.
I was born, who is the, who is the contractor that's looking to purchase this land to develop it, you guys are working for someone, who is it?
Oh, the company that bought the land is BBL.
Same company, North Florida Professional Services, they're all the same owner.
Are they all working for them?
Yeah, it's the same owner.
They, they, Bishop Bailey and Lane.
The ones that got.
Yeah.
Okay, I was, I was just wanting to, you know, who they were working for to try to get this developed.
That's the person, the land itself, that's BBL.
BBL and North Florida Professional Services are all the same.
Yeah, they're all together, but like listed as, as like the owner.
Was Bishop Bailey and Lane, and it was the same one that's only North Florida Professional Services. So for them to sit there and say they don't know what they're going to do, to me is a lie, because if they own it and they're doing the engineering for it, you know exactly what you're trying to put there. My input, even though I'm not on the council anymore, for a high density, oh, one of the resolutions that said twenty per acre, that's a lot. You know exactly what you're trying to do, White Springs doesn't mind the growth, but to what extent? That's a lot, that's a lot of buildings on one acre of land. And that's something y'all need to take into consideration, if you're going to approve some of it, then you need to do, redo your own resolution and put a cap on what they're going to put per acre. Because that can be projects, whatever, not saying that I have a problem with low-income housing or whatever, but what I've also known about them is they're not always forthcoming and truthful with their reporting. And I will say that.
And what about the traffic impact, have you all discussed that yet, the impact of the traffic with these housing and properties that is going to make it for the town? This is a workshop, so this is citizens' meeting.
Um, now, Chair, first of all, again, yes, the residential identity does allow for twenty dwellings per acre, but as previously mentioned, the RMS two is other district only allows for fifteen, so that's kind of a misconception, it would be actually fifteen dwelling per acre max. And again, what she referred to is contract zoning, which is prohibited by state for a while, so that, to redo the resolution for contract zoning would be actually a violation of state law.
So the resolution you have online with twenty per acre.
The resolution is for the land use, because the resol, that's for the high density, the corresponding zoning district that is over is RMS two, which only allows for fifteen dwelling per acre.
So I think.
Hold on just a moment, Mr., what's your last name?
Grace.
Grace, Mr. Grace?
I have like three questions here, one, I'm curious what you're going to do with the commercial aspect of the property, because we were told the last shop we had, they were bringing no business, no monetary value to this town at all, other than housing. My second question is, we already have a ton of water issues in this town, this is going to impact our town big time as far as water, according to him, thirty-seven thousand gallons extra, last meeting we had.
We're going to let Ray speak on the water.
Pardon?
We're going to, Ray is going to address all the water.
Okay.
And your third question, you got another?
Yeah, I just got a long moment.
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things, the, the property is currently owned by, um, the groups you've been talking about, but it's under contract to a developer.
Who is the developer?
That's part of the process, they're here in the room, um, I also want to say there's, there's a difference between land use and zoning. So, and, and Brandon's tried to talk about that, there's a, a land use designation and then a corresponding zoning designation, which dictates what you can do. So while it may seem cagey that Brandon is not telling you exactly what they're going to do, he doesn't know what they're going to do because he doesn't have the approval to do it yet. He hasn't come to you and said, I want to build this type of neighborhood with these types of driveways, with this type of access, with this type of stormwater management system, with these types of buffers and setbacks, he hasn't presented that to you. He will have to do that, he will have to come back to you with more than just lines around vacant dirt, he'll have to show you where things are going to be, he'll have to show you what the traffic analysis shows. He's going to have to show you where the utilities are going to come from, where the water's going to come from, he's going to have to show you where the stormwater is going to go and how it's going to be treated and discharged. All of that is yet to come, you're not deciding that on these petitions. And that's the point we're trying to make, is that while it seems like we're not trying to answer your questions of what we're going to put there, we don't know yet, because we haven't developed a plan, we haven't sat down and talked to you about, these are the types of commercial operations we want in parcel C. It's general, it's general retail, general commercial, but exactly what types of businesses and buildings and how they're going to be oriented, where the parking's going to be, where the traffic's going to come and go from, that's all going to come to you in the future. But we can't get there without this, and so I just want to make sure we understand, we're talking about stages of development here and stages of approval. This is not a one-time deal where you say, sure, rezonate whatever you want, go build whatever you want, that's not how it works. They're going to have to come back in front of you and show you what they're doing, where it's going to go, and how people are going to get to it from.
Yes, it was previously stated that, um, we don't have a zoning planning board, so that is correct. Also, we do not, we have outdated LDRs, I'm sure you all know that as well, so you're wanting us to blindly, I'm, I'm still going to say blindly, make a decision with outdated information. We don't have a planner, our budget is coming up, hopefully that will be part of it to, to get through this process. Growth is needed in any city, I mean, without growth, a city will die, but it needs to be appropriate growth, it needs to be growth that is going to be conducive for everyone that lives here. I'm going to be eighty years old, so it's not going to affect me, but I do have grandchildren, so I do understand the aspect of us needing growth, but I don't feel like we need to be pushed, forced, or pretty much just shoved down our throats without us having the proper guidance, we need the proper guidance here. I don't do land, I'm the voice for the citizens. In my profession, I can tell you everything backwards and forth, but I can tell you, our LDRs are outdated, that I can tell you, you all are aware of that, you know that, you had to study, study them yourselves. So you're still wanting us to decide upon this with outdated data, is that fair for the town?
We can only play by the rules that are on the books, you know, if, if the city of Jacksonville's zoning code is outdated, that doesn't mean they can't or don't make decisions, they have to. We have to play with the rules that are on the books, and what they have submitted is consistent with the comp plan, they've provided all of the zoning and land use data, they have not provided traffic analysis. They have not provided stormwater analysis, because they're not at that point yet, they will have to do that, and you will see it. They'll have to come to you and say, these are the number of units we want to build, this is where they are, this is how people get to them, this is where the stormwater goes, they'll have to show you all of that. But right now, what they've provided for zoning and land use meets your comp plan, whether it's outdated or not, it's the one that's on the books.
Haven't you already? Okay, I'm just going to be like forthcoming now, to get to the point, that are you the same group that has been dealing with the Fort White situation? Rocky Ford, from my understanding, is the owner of the subdivision that you all are developing and you just kind of go mission of that bit, right?
I'm not involved in that project, I was more for the.
So North Florida Professionals have nothing to do.
I'm not saying I'm not involved, but they are, they are, they do have a project, Rocky Ford and.
Okay, and so the situation with that whole development, we did, I did a lot of homework on it, um, there were many different, like, just as it was told, lies told about the, uh, Swan River, the variances, the streetlights curse, sidewalks, gutters, um, this is just, I know you're saying this is down the road, but I owe it to the citizens to know what this particular company has Fort White going through, Fort White is in a whole mess, a whole mess behind this. And I'm not, I owe it to the citizens to do right by my town and what's going to be best for me, I like, I'll be eighty-two probably before it gets done. And I may not have, I may not have grandchildren, I have a son that's probably going to still be here, and, you know, I have to look out for him and everybody else in here and their children and grandchildren. So I just want the community to know some of the things that Fort White's going through, like, um, so far as even just connecting to a collector road and not having that set up right. Um, documents from Swan River Management District, the potential swells were not developed correctly, um, to handle the water flow, um, what are some of the other things? In fact, I think you have.
I do have some issues also, now, I also know, because it's, it's no sewer, there's no lines over there in their property, right? Okay, we just, a ten inch force made, once we put it, you have to go into that two-inch line for all those fifty residents back there from, um, Mr.
So what, what happened is, so in order to supply water for this whole development, you would have to go by the camp, that's the six-inch line that runs from camp to the library. So you would have to tie in at least an eight-inch line to run a half a mile, three-quarters of a mile around to that northwest corner for this development. So when you do the, right now, when we open one fire, the people out of Lost Hill, the Jackson, Diamond, one sixty-first, one sixty-eighth place, Orange Grove, they call and complain about multiple water pressure. So when you put an eight-inch line to feed the development, what you think is going to happen to all these people out there on the two-inch, they were like?
I understand this is, these are real issues, I'm not saying they are, they certainly are, but those are also issues that when the developer would come in to apply that they address, they may have to pay to have the system agreed.
Well, right here you have, you have a subject property located within the Community Centralized Sanitary System Services, the subject property will be served sanitary sewer via Town of White Springs sanitary sewer, sewer system. The Town of White Springs sanitary sewer system is anticipated to meet and exceed the adopted level of service standards for sanitary sewer established with the comprehensive plan. We don't have sewer out there, so you basically putting that on the backs of the people of White Springs to provide sewer out there.
And that would be on the responsibility of the development.
But in this, it says the Town of White Springs Sanitary Sewer System is anticipated to meet or exceed the adopted.
That's what you have.
Correct, and they also showed that.
Okay, exactly.
But there would be, but again, this is, you're at sixty thousand level, you appear, y'all are talking about, y'all are talking about.
So you is not informed.
It's impossible to look at those angles.
You can say it's down the road, but if that developer, their proof is that the developers want to go tomorrow, we are responsible tomorrow. You could say it's going to be twenty years down the road, it does, it's, that's what you saying now, which the developers can come tomorrow or whenever they want to and develop this land. And guess what, that's on the backs of the people of Town of White Springs that have to do that, now, my issue with this, uh, council, I, go ahead, I'll let you go.
Realistically, in order to get through all that permitting and everything else, you're looking at a minimum here at that, and if there's issue like. And, and, well, but then again, when a developer comes in and they want to develop the first phase of subdivision, and you've got these water and sewer issues, guess it's going to pay to look for your system to develop. Not the test piers, not the town of White, White Springs, it's going to be the, the developer now.
Now, even if the developer would have put in a, a list station and, and all of that, they got to tie into our system, which is already crumbling, you don't understand, we have a way to fix our system, but right now with other issues, we're not going to, that's nothing going to happen soon, so that's going to crumble and like an eight, pleasant, an eight inch into a two inch, that's like sucking out of a, a coffee straw and a drink straw, like who's going to get the most?
The point, the point Brandon's trying to make is that that point.
He compared it to turkey sandwiches and ham sandwiches, I'm tur-.
The point, the point I'm trying to make is that at that point, you can say no, you can say, this doesn't work, the way you've set it up, you cannot tie into our system, that's not what we're asking for here. That's not what we're asking for here.
Based on this, you're saying that we gonna, we gonna exceed, be like city.
You're gonna have, he's gonna have to come back in front of you. He's gonna have to. The analysis shows that you meet or, meet or exceed. But if he comes in and he says, I wanna build two hundred units.
But you already have what you're gonna build. Like y'all said on the six acres, y'all, do a hundred and twenty-eight acres. You already have this in writing. And do you know the population of White Springs? Do you know, do you know the population of White Springs right now?
My understanding is close to eight hundred.
It's close to eight hundred. It's not eight hundred, but it's close to eight hundred. In that area right now, when I was looking at this, y'all proposed to bring nine hundred and thirty-three people estimate, and which could be higher in that little area. That's, that's more than the population of White Springs. That's more than the population of White Springs. So what you gonna have to do, we gonna have to increase everything so y'all can have y'all development. We don't have, we have seven total employees for the Town of White Springs. Now, you can say they can grill their infrastructure. You gonna have to put a whole new meter system in there because we got somebody reading meters by hand. So you gonna have to bring in a, a meter system and you gonna have to put in the tower or whatever the equipment you use to do a digital meter system. We got one person that could take a whole week to read all the water meters. But you gonna double the population? And you think the Town of White Springs can stand that?
I mean, every town has their own thing and certainly.
That's a growing pain with that. That's fundamentally on these people. That's a growing pain. That's a hard pain.
The purpose of the development is to help the people themselves.
That's, I, I'm hearing is something, okay, we got.
I read that. It says the medical bills, where is it?
And then you said in the, also, I wish I was, I was trying to find it, that you were gonna build something that looks, you gonna change the environment of White Springs. Are these one or two-story, what, two, three-story buildings? Oh, okay. Hold on. Let me read it. Because it's gonna change how the look, the look of White Springs. You gonna have to put in track, you doubling the population, you definitely gonna have to bring us some traffic.
But in the traffic analysis is part of that. When you look at a planning analysis from a land use and zoning perspective, you look at a maximum of developments scenario under existing conditions. Not future conditions, not any other conditions. This is non-binding, concurrency is non-binding at this point. This is a preliminary development order. You're not giving the developer any rights. You're not reserving that concurrency. You're not deserving of doing anything. This is just a ways and zoning change. They're not asking you to build a subdivision. They're putting in a commercial. They're not even asking for anything right now.
You're saying not, well, in phase one, it's apartments on the base. Then you have commercial in this phase two. Then you have residential. So you're saying you're not changing, but you gotta be right that you gonna do this.
That's a preliminary planning analysis based upon the land use and zoning. It is not a indicative report of what can or cannot be done with the property or will not be done with the property. You never know until, how many land use and zoning change? Unless the developer or the knows that they have the land use and zoning, they're not gonna spend sixty, seventy thousand dollars on a market analysis to figure out what is, what this town needs, what it can sustain, and what should be developed. I mean, that's just the fact of the matter. So again, for us to say, what's gonna be there? No, we cannot tell you because, again, this is just a preliminary, this is, this is a planning phase.
So you're saying that you don't know what's gonna be there, but then coming on down the line, we might put up anything, a strip club or anything that's.
Everything would have to come back before this board for approval.
All right, T D, you have the question.
We did a few years back with General One, developed out there on Woodpecker. He came in, presented that thing. He was a little bit more in-depth than, than just this because he actually owned the land. He didn't have to go through all this. But he actually brought in a map. He was gonna put in so many homes and everything. And I specifically remember the council shutting it down because he wanted us to provide water, the sewer, and everything else and the traffic. And we're like, there is no possible way that, you know, our little infrastructure here can support that to pump way out there, all the way up forty-one. There was just no way. And he had, he had no explanation of what he was gonna try to do other than, I wanna put a bunch of homes in here. And he wanted to bring, basically what he said was the many villages up here. And, you know, that's just something to look at too. Yeah, they're just, they're basically asking us to change our rules to let somebody who owns that land build on it. But, you know, this, he said this at the very beginning of it. They, they're saying they wanna do this and they're paid for it and stuff like that. We don't know exactly what it is. But they came to us and say, hey, look, we wanna put in two hundred site-built, single-family homes to people to buy from, you know, out of state, down south or whatever. Those are a little more, but they're like, oh, we wanna put apartments in it. We're not sure. You know, they could put apartment in with, like you said, nine hundred acres. We can't, we can't support that.
Again, that's all speculation because, again, this land use and zoning change, that only grants us the ability to come back before this board and ask for something. It doesn't grant us the ability to go there and build a bunch of apartments or, or homes. If the infrastructure isn't there, if the concurrency doesn't match, if there's things that prohibit it, guess what? It don't get done. So again, all these issues that I keep bringing up, yes, they're issues, but they're not issues that are pertinent nor relevant to the land use and zoning process. And I promise you, I, I, I promise you, every single one of those points are absolutely a hundred, hundred percent valid. But are they valid at this point in gesture? No. And that's under, I mean, there's law that shows that. But what, where all, everything you're talking about is, when this developer wants to come back in and say, build first phase of the subdivision, if there's a water sewer to support that, and if the developer ain't willing to pay to do whatever upgrades are required to make that possible, guess what? You do not. They don't get built. So again, and there's, there's gonna have to be, I don't deny, there's gonna have to be upgrades to your system, your water, your sewer. And again, there's, there are grants or appropriations. There are plenty of things out there that, hey, if you don't want no water, though, that's fine. There are plenty of other firms that can go out there and get those grants and appropriations for them. In fact, you get a problem, because a town can have appropriations yourself. You can monitor yourself, but, you know, sometimes it's better to have somebody who has a lot of expertise because I can maybe, whether you get them or not. But again, these are issues that are pertinent, but not at this point in gesture. And I implore this board to really consider this because I, I, I'm not discrediting any of your concerns. Now, I don't discredit that you have concern about the future. I do too. I mean, I've lived, like I said, I've lived in this area for forty years. I, I, I come to White Springs, bought off, at least to come here, where they all have two restaurants and go out and eat. Now there's, what, one restaurant left in.
So they don't come anymore, right?
Right, your restaurants are gone.
So White Springs doesn't mean, yeah, not that meaningful to you.
It is meaningful to me. We have a beautiful state of Foster Park here. You have a bunch of beautiful environmental reasons to come here. I mean, the river, the springs, the, the, um, the Swan River Park. Um, I've, I've got friends that live over here. I mean, I do have a vestment in this community too. Maybe all like y'all do because y'all live here. But this isn't something that is, is gonna be a detriment to the community. I can promise you that. It's not one to, if, if developer comes in and, guess what? We don't have water sewer, traffic council, they're gonna exceed traffic law. If allowed on forty-one or whatever the entrance they need, they don't get to develop. They have to provide a burden of proof at the town. Whenever they go through like a subdivision process or a site plan or whatever, they're gonna provide a common substantial evidence to this board that they meet all the criteria to be able to develop that property. And this is not gonna be even a burden of this board or the taxpayer. It's gonna be a burden for the developer to pay for that. And if it's not there, then guess what? It don't happen. Again, and the reason why I mention that is, this is only a request to be able to ask for something for the future. Doesn't mean that two hundred residential, it may end up that in the future, the market shows there's only fifty homes on that property. The multifamily, it may be a, a single-family development with seventy-five hundred square foot logs. Just because it's multifamily doesn't mean it's gonna be multifamily. Single-family is allowed, doesn't look like a family. But we don't know because we haven't done a market study, because we're not gonna do a market study until we can get the land use and zoning to be able to come to this board in the future and ask whether or not we can or cannot do so.
Yes, and Mr. Gandy first, sir. Sir, can you just move to Mr. Gandy just a second? Dandy, right?
Yes, it's a little bit. Also, I cannot believe you're almost there. You know, I think you're lying. Hello, again. So I wanted to address something that you said in the beginning about young people not having housing in this area. I think that shows a fundamental misunderstanding of White Springs' problems and frankly, Hamilton County's problems in general. It's already one of the cheapest places to live. The reason that we can't attract and retain our young people is because there's no jobs. Flooding the area and cheap housing is not going to solve that problem. We're going to import a large workforce that will have nowhere to work, which will bring crime with it. It'll bring unrest with it. And they're talking about opening a hundred and forty thousand square feet worth of commercial space, but realistically, that's a small department store that is a grocery store. They're talking about bringing in three or four hundred households on the justification that all the work at a department store. And if they're thinking about opening office space or professional space, they don't, the white collar workers don't wanna live in affordable housing in apartment complexes. They're going to want more spread out. That's kind of what we have to offer as a town is, spread out. You're not waking up in the morning and looking out your bathroom window and your neighbor's waving hi to you. You're not having the crazy person banging your ceiling with a broom because your cat's too loud or whatever. So I just wanna remind y'all that even though they ask for high density, it is really just not appropriate for the area. We have nothing like it. White Springs is the town of folk festivals. It's the town of state parks and easy moving.
And historic homes.
And historic homes. It is not the town for high-rise apartments. And it makes no sense to even put that option on the table when it is so far against our character as a town.
We sorry, I don't know your name. You can say your name for the community if you like.
My name's Paul Brennan Stall. I live over on First Street. And I appreciate all the information. Back here, it was kinda hard, typical period. I was listening to what I'm hearing from the people up here, the council and town hall, and I like what I'm hearing. I really liked what you said. Okay, this is our town. We're in the driver's seat. He can't tell us what we're gonna do and what we're not gonna do. We have the opportunity to zone it for what we want, not just open the doors and let them decide what they're gonna put there. Now, we all know that apartments have short-term residents. Short-term residents don't have a vested interest in the town like all of us that live here and own the property. We want this town to survive and thrive. And we don't want anything negative. And we don't have to just give them whatever they decide they want. And the sales pitch, we have the right to say, single-family homes, quarter acre or more. And for the resident, for the business district, nothing larger than five thousand square feet. We don't care what the impact statement says. We don't care what you're gonna come up with or, or how much money they're gonna spend for whatever. We don't care. We're the ones that own this town. We are the town. We decide. It's not them to decide. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just sort of getting in, in the center of things and I apologize.
What's your name, sir?
My name's Doug Schneider. The property has to be used for something sooner or later. You can't sit there and, and have deer running all over it and snakes and everything else. It, it, it does nothing for the town. So we have the ability to understand as a town what we're gonna use it for. We can listen to anybody. We can listen to his story and, and every other contractor in the state of Florida that's done it everywhere and done the same thing and built wherever they wanna build. And money runs over small people. And I'm sorry to say that, but, you know, I come from some businesses that, that's happened. I've seen that done. So the fact of the matter is, I have no ability to stop anything that's going on in front of my house in White Springs. I feel like I've been really shafted here. So we've got the ability to stop this or let it go. It's gotta be rezoned someday sooner or later. Doesn't have to be today. I don't know the people that own the property. I don't, I, obviously, there's a chunk of money here. And the chunk of money gets into a family situation. Next thing you know, it's a problem. So I don't know why it's being sold and why they didn't wanna use it for something else or it's just a family issue. It's gotta be gone. But the fact of the matter is, we control what goes there. And if we prove zoning right now, that doesn't mean anything for this guy at all. Just so that we, I mean, we understand this. He might have big lawyers who come in here and try to slam us, but we can't allow that to happen just because we're afraid now he's gonna build things we don't want. We can stop that. He can't build anything there that we don't want. But the fact of the matter is, it's gotta be rezoned someday. That's gotta be faced. That property cannot sit there as it is. What's it doing for anybody? It's not even making interest anymore because the property value is falling. So he's talking about raising property values. I disagree with that and I think a lot of us do too. That, that it's not gonna do well for my home, not in the area where my home's at. You know, that might not be true of everybody else's home here, but mine's gonna be directly involved in this mess. So I got a problem with that, but it's gotta be rezoned. So we're talking about rezoning right now. Is that not what we're here for? To approve a rezoning situation? It's gotta be rezoned. He doesn't have to have anything to do with the rezoning. He's the one who pushed it in the first place. Some guy's got a dollar figure in his eyes and say, I could make money here doing this. And that's how people, that's what America's about, okay? So sometimes in White Springs, we don't care about that, you know? But the fact of the matter is, that's the issue. Not what's gonna get built there, not the water systems. Yeah, I'm not happy with any of that either. This will all bring us new things and it should bring it to us at no charge. But the money's not always the issue. We're not gonna have that quaint White Springs town anymore. The hardware store's not gonna be the hardware store anymore. Uh, the bridge is not gonna be the bridge right next to the park by the, uh, the string. It's, it's all gonna change. And that's what happens when rezoning goes in and things happen. That land's not gonna sit there. Those people are gonna sell that land to somebody. And you know what? Somebody will have a big enough order and a big enough pocket to push us around. But if we rezoned it and we allow what's in there, what we want to be in there and control it, that means that we gotta do a better job here as a council, our board. We, we don't have the people here to fight this guy or even know what this guy's talking about. That's our problem. And we've looked at it over the years. In the, in the four years I've been here, I've seen the decrease. And it's gonna go more. So we all have to get aboard and say, hey, we need this building and zoning department. We need people to handle our needs here. Curtis can't do it all, you know?
Now, we've had it advertised.
So the fact of the matter is, that's the mentality. We just gotta understand, we gotta do something with our town. But rezoning is the biggest issue here. He's not the issue. What he's gonna do is the issue because that's all paper. Because he can't do any of that until it's approved. And you don't have to let prove it. So if you approve this zoning today, all you've done is. So if you approve this zoning today, all you've done is opened a door for other people like him to come to us and talk to us. That's what's happened, nothing else. So, what he says could be a big story. Yeah, it's all on a piece of paper, "I'm gonna buy it because it's beautiful." We all buy cars because they look good and all this stuff, you know, but that's not the scenario here. You know, we can beat him up all night long. There, he's not the problem right now. The problem is, we got a piece of land over there that's not doing anything for the town of White Springs. And it's not gonna change unless we decide how to do that. And I don't know what that is, but I'm just telling you, he's not the problem right now.
You want to go somewhere and you're feeling sorry for your father?
But, but that, I just, you know, we're, we're talking about rezoning, that's what we need. We need to figure out what to do with that. And I don't know those people, I don't know the family issue, but somebody does. And the fact of the matter is, we need to be able to be more intelligent about what we're doing.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I just, I forgot just this much when I was up here earlier. I really hope that you allow the, the people that own property here in town to vote on this issue by putting it on the back of our water bill, just a small box, yes or no? Do we change the zoning? And if, if so, how do we change it? For multifamily, no. Quarter acre, yes. You know, high density, no. It wouldn't cost a whole lot to add a ballot on the back of our water bill that you're paying, sending to everybody so that we could voice our opinion. A lot of us aren't up for arguing about zoning. You know, it's okay to rezone and grow the town, but it's how the town's gonna grow. And that's what we all have a voice about. We can't just open the door and let them zone it for whatever they want.
That's true.
Because we are the ones that are in charge. It's our town, homeowners that have the vested interest that need to have to say.
Yes, sir.
My name's Kamal Oliver. Uh, I am an associate of Patrick here. Also an attorney. Unfortunately, that's, I'm not here in that capacity, at least I'm not here at this moment. Coming into the city, well, I live in Jacksonville now, but I'm not from Jacksonville. I'm a small town myself, actually, very small country, to be honest with you. And driving through, uh, uh, the main road coming up and I saw the sign saying, "It's for it." I mean, and I saw that, so I won't dismiss it, it just really put into mind exactly what this town is all about. And even sitting here tonight and seeing the turnout, it's almost like the movies. I mean, frankly, seeing, uh, uh, leadership here reminds me of Woman King, I don't know if you've seen that one. But then seeing how the town comes together tonight to, um, address and to kind of, to, to provide input to issues that affect you all, I mean, for me, that's, like, it really put me in the, in the, in the place of like, wow, man, who does this? Um, in Jacksonville, it's, you know, it's, it's, you don't find it anymore. Uh, neighbors and it's all a bunch of crime. Little background about myself, uh, uh, I, I was speaking over ten years in law enforcement. I was a, uh, started off at Gainesville Police, I was a police officer there, I went to JSO, I was a deputy sheriff there. Quite frankly, I'm still in law enforcement now as a reserve officer, I start in, work in reserve system. But what I'm saying is, to see a community and, I mean, going to be eight hundred people approximately in the town, to see a good portion here tonight, with no excuses to be here, it really tells a lot, okay? So, I, I say that to compliment y'all on what I'm seeing so far. Granted, my observations are both good and bad and certain things. Uh, one, I'm gonna, I would ask, uh, that you all, in essence, I, I know you're concerned a lot about certain issues, you see us, see this potential growth or, or the rezoning as more of a threat? And it, it might be a threat, I mean, it, it has been fully, um, discovered or decided yet, but it might be an awesome opportunity like the last gentleman said. And now is just not the time, I would say, to foreclose on that opportunity to, in essence, collaborate and find a solution for this city. This city does need, this, this city does need growth, right? Like, I, I, this is a proud moment right now, I have a two-year-old daughter and I, I can make this promise. At some point, I'll probably bring her here to see what I just witnessed tonight, okay? Like, I'm seeing a group of, of, of viewers that has, that has broke, that like, they've, they've gone against the grain and that's just what the picture that's being painted. And to see the level of questioning, the level, the level of concern lets me know that, you know what? Y'all love this city and y'all love this town. And for me, in essence, even being asked to, to come aboard to assist with the process, that for me is, is reassured. Because where I look at it is that if we do get to a stage where, uh, there's some collaboration, that means there's gonna be a good, um, it's, it's actually gonna be a good team effort. If you have members of the town that's with them, gonna be a part of the process, especially during the buying. And that's important. Now, if y'all want something, I mean, I think, you know, it, it's, 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 it's definitely, um, uh, within your rights to say, "No, we'll hold this." Uh, but I know that the conversation so far and kind of, I'm just trying to stay away from some of the, uh, the legalist stuff, but that this stage right here towards the rezoning part, this is one of many stages, right? And you all are the gatekeepers and so far, y'all are in the charging job. But the problem is, the gate remains shut, like the last gentleman said. Sometimes it'd be kind of, you stunk the growth, you stunk the opportunity to grow. And it might seem a little correct in the, in the beginning, but the power's still with, as, as, as the, the, um, citizens are saying, it's, it's in y'all, y'all's hands. So, the real issue tonight was just to kind of come to y'all and say, "Hey, you know, we understand, you, you, this is, this is, I, I documented some concerns that y'all are having, there's some density issues, uh, uh, there's some issues with the potential of the doubling population, uh, uh, there's definitely issues with the infrastructure, water issues. Uh, so it's a lot, traffic, potential traffic issues. But this is how most great cities start out, I'm saying. I'm a history major, which is another part of it too, like, I studied history. I studied university of Florida, hundred grand in law. I grew up in this, in this, in an island in Jamaica where we, we had to go catch water in the, up the hill and bring it back down. So I, I do, I do understand the struggles and I do understand what it takes to grow. And sometimes it's hard, like, growth is hard as heck. So, this, this is when you come in and kind of, you know, uh, just be a lawyer right now. I just, I was compelled to that, I guess I was kind of pushed to get up here and just speak on this because I am proud to see, uh, to see what you all are doing as, as the council, as, as we assume, asking tough questions and, um, and, and, and making sure you, you all are, making sure that what members come to the city is right to the city, for this town. And, uh, but I just want to say, the stage that we're at with rezoning, it's, it's, it has a, the very beginning. And at any point, if we can just, if we can, if we can just have the right conversations and get the right information, ensure the right information, at any point, y'all, y'all still just still the lever. Y'all as leaders, but also as the people. But, this is still a very essential stage where, like the last gentleman said, rezoning's gonna be inevitable, inevitable. And at some point, the city can now put this, uh, this matter, I guess, that feel this of what to do with this land and then come together and, I'm, I'm not sure how many investors are lined up to, to, to come to, to, to the city to do it, but you know what, there's one now and I'm not sure what folk lands are, obviously. Because that's kind of how it works when it comes to, um, uh, investments and, and planning. But, they know this city, this, this leadership here and the, and the town members aren't being capable of it. So I think just going through this process alone, actually, it stills in my, hey, you know what? If they were thinking about coming here to bamboozle whoever, y'all aren't the ones to do that to. So, what that creates then is a situation where, you know what, whoever it is now that you all, uh, are given opportunity to, at least, it's, it's all about an opportunity at this point. Is that, you know what? These folks ain't, ain't, ain't about, excuse me, I'm gonna speak a little bit, but ain't about that. So y'all gotta come correct. And y'all gotta make sure you're sincere and you're honest, but just taste that, 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 that opportunity. That's all they're asking for at this point. Y'all can shut that down at the last, at the last minute if y'all want to. And, 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 and that's what y'all's powers as gatekeepers. And I'm, I'm so proud to see that, how you share the power equally with the, with the fellow, uh, citizens here because I mean, that right there, I mean, that's, that's powerful. And I just wanted to get up and say that and share what I've observed as a visitor, as a guest here, 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 due to the town. Um, and I, I, I guess it just, it just, as, as a history major, I, I am, I'm very, I'm very pleased to see what I'm seeing as this, how the makeup is and how, uh, everyone's kind of like either working together and, and having the same concerns. So, that's all I can say tonight, just thank y'all for the opportunity to present for y'all tonight and, um...
And, and, and like I said, he's not, he's, he's definitely not the bad guy. I, 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 he's had a hard job. It's tough, it's tough, it's tough, I know it's hard.
I think your attorney, that your attorney in a, in a, in that capacity yet, I probably get far.
Do we know that?
And you said that, yeah, we should all work together and it should be a front, because we work through together. But from the very beginning, this was thrown in our face one night, all of this. The resolution was already written, they were already posted in the paper, advertised. The council knew nothing of that. The staff knew nothing of that. They called up here, hold on, I'm talking, I have the floor. I, as far as I know, they called up here, asked for the next resol, eight resolution numbers. Um, they were given the eight resolution numbers, that was all that was given. Because it's, that's public record, you can give out what the next resolution number is, there's nothing wrong with it. Now, at no time did they say, "We were wanting to present this, we're in this development process or whatever, we're gonna write these resolutions, we're gonna put them in the paper." They showed up to the council meeting with all of this, this folder that you see, everything here. That's what every one of us got that night. It's a stack of papers thrown in front of us, wanting us to vote for these resolutions that we had no idea what even publicized. So when you say work together, I, when I say work together, that means from the beginning to the end. We are already past the first stage where it is this part. And so they're asking me to, you know, it pretty much make an assumption, I mean, a vote on something where I'm not, of course, qualified. I'm a secretary, you give me a word document, tell me to do a spreadsheet, I can do it all day long. LDRs, comprehensive plan, that's Greek to me. I own it right now because we don't have a plan and a zoning board, that is our job is to add in this plan and this on the board. But to me, for me to be fair to my citizens, to not vote on something that I don't know anything about and I'm not comfortable voting on.
Yeah, and, and address that, we follow, how we have followed the version situation.
Who told you that? Well, who told?
I don't know if I thought any of them, but, but, but.
Well, no, we have to know because that's very important, that's who would tell you to go and write a resolution and pay for them to be.
And I apologize that this is a very unconventional way because of the fact that, hey, you don't have a plan, you don't have.
But that's not how it's been handled before. Where anyone that wants a resolution or any other thing to happen, they come before the council, ask for that permission. We say, "Okay, we will have y'all, our attorney draw up the resolution or whatever, ordinance or whatever it may be." And that's how that works. And the town clerk is the one that posts the resolutions in the paper for advertising, not the developer or the people that's working for the developer, whoever y'all, at this point, I don't know who's who. So, that's crazy.
Again, I, I, I love the nameage, but this was the process that was given to me because y'all didn't have staff to do the work. The reason why the, the resolution, the ordinance is the same format, the same thing that I did twenty years working for local jurisdictions.
That's the town of White Springs, right?
It's, it's a format that's issued by law. So, it's, it's the same in every, every jurisdiction. The resolution, if you go to any jurisdiction in the state of Florida, they're pretty much gonna be almost identical with some minor changes of who the local jurisdiction is, a legal description, and who the petitioner is. So, that's, that's statewide. I, I write these resolutions for about six or seven jurisdictions right now. Um, and I do that on a daily basis. And again, they're pretty uniform, I would say, so are the ordinances. They, they're all, have contained some things that are state law. And I apologize that there was a misconception about this coming before y'all because it was my understanding that, um, this mayor may come to y'all and have presented this about six months prior and that y'all were familiar with this. So, out of, as my understanding, y'all already kind of built on this, were aware of it and that when y'all got this, y'all would understand what was coming before you.
There was no way to correlate, well, she was talking about to this, Julie's packet right here because she said she didn't know, but she just said she didn't know what they were gonna do. Now, here, I kind of, I'm, I'm still confused because you're saying that the developer does not know exactly what they're gonna do. So, in this packet, when I look at the first ordinance, it says on the first five acres, multifamily apartments, a hundred and twenty-eight. You either got the average number of people, that's how I ga, that's how I calculated the nine hundred and thirty-three. You got, oh, I'm confused for you to say, "Oh, that's not what the developer..." I'm confused because if you got it right here in black and white, I must be, I, I mean, you know, I mean...
In a world of planning, there are different phases. So, the.
Phase one, it's, it's, phase one is what?
Conferencing plan.
How many acres?
No, no, I'm not talking about acres, I'm talking about actual phases.
Your phase is one?
I'm talking about comprehensive planning. So, when you look at a staff report, when you look at concurrency, when you look at anything to do with a piece of property under comprehensive planning, you look at a worst-case scenario and that's what you have. It's not a real world scenario, it's not, this is what's gonna be developed scenario. It is a worst-case scenario and that's a general acceptable progress by the state, that's a general acceptable progress among planning, the EICP, and anybody, any report that you give for a comp plan change within the state of Florida.
Okay.
Same with rezoning.
So, what you give it, this is what we have to go on, right? When you advertise, correct? Am I wrong?
That is correct, that is a conceptual plan of what could be allowed in the worst-case scenario.
So, we're on here where we know it's the worst-case scenario. You got, um...
It says there's a maximum of.
Well, you also got, where we gonna handle, the town's gonna handle sanitary, you got how many gallons per day you expect to use, just for the first five acres. You got how many properties. You got, you get the schools. You got how many additional people you estimate. So, what I'm having a hard time grasping is why you're saying that they don't necessarily know. So you're saying this is the worst-case scenario of what they gonna put on that property?
That's the worst-case scenario that will be allowed under the land use has been requested, isn't it? It has nothing to do with real-world applicable. And comprehensive planning is a, again, sixty thousand mile view above the world looking down at it. It's not a boots-on-the-ground looking directly at it. It's a, it, it's honestly, a comp plan is goals, objectives, and policies and a future land use plan. And it is a general guide policy. It is not a, it's not land development regulations, it's not, here's how you do this or here's what you actually wanna do. It is a conceptual plan.
So, um, calling it worst-case scenario maybe doesn't help to understand it. It's, it's the realm of possibility.
So they have the option to do that, right?
Hold on, let me, let me go through it. It's the realm of possibility. And everything lined up perfectly and every, it was the best piece of property in the world and there were no water issues, there were no swamp issues, there were no access issues, no utility issues, no issues whatsoever. You can pack nine hundred whatever units in there, okay? Because again, we're at sixty thousand feet, we don't know what's going on down there. As you get lower, that number will come down. Because you're gonna have wetlands, you're gonna have access issues, you're gonna have utility issues, you're gonna have lit-in issues. They're restricted. The marketing and feasibility study, hey, you know what, we couldn't sell nine hundred units in that place if we wanted to in a hundred years. We need to make this, I think somebody had mentioned, you know, maybe we need to make these half-acre lots, maybe we need to make these one-acre lots, whatever the market's gonna be. But when you're at this stage, very early, the zoning deals with the full realm and the other possibilities without knowing the details. And as you develop the details, and, you know, again, as, as the attorneys have said, uh, you still have your hand on the lever, right? Hey, we figured out a way to do four hundred units, duh, 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 well, that's not consistent. Hey, we figured out a way to do four hundred units, duh-duh-duh-duh-duh, well, that's not consistent, that's not gonna pass concurrency with us. That's gonna be objectionable to us for any number of reasons, you'll have to go through all that, right? They won't know how many units they wanna put there until they know if the zoning is something they want to explore. So when you see those really big numbers, again, it's not so much worst-case scenario for the developer standpoint, it's the best-case scenario, I think you can only hope so about that, right? Like, if you can get nine hundred units, let's, let's sell the nine hundred units. Probably, almost certainly not consistent, because every single piece of property on the plan has issues, right? So just, if, if it helps to understand it that way, I think same worst-case scenario, no, it's, it's in an ideal world.
I, I understand what you're saying, but on these packets, they seem like they did a little bit of homework, they have engineering firm, they have, like when you mentioned wetlands, according to the illustration, A four, this is a comprehensive plan entitled Wetlands, which is based upon the National Wetlands Inventory dated nineteen eighty-seven, and the National Wetlands Renaissance Survey dated, uh, nineteen eighty-one, there are no wetlands located on subject property, evaluation. So, when you have an evaluation, it makes me believe that you all did an evaluation. Given the subject property contains no wetlands, there are no issues related to wetland protection. So, throughout this, on every parcel, it seems like they have already done the homework, and it also, well, who was need for y'all to think that, uh, somebody just gonna buy a piece of property without evaluating that property, doing some kind of research, I buy property all the time. You gonna research, is this wet property, uh, is there wildlife, protected wildlife on this property, there ain't no way. Nobody brought this piece of property and just said, you know, brought it in the blind and said, you know what, let's see if we can develop, let's see, maybe we can put a hundred, somebody did some homework. We ain't got these big old stacks, and nobody do no homework, y'all can't tell me that. Ain't no way. But the way y'all, and like she said, we starting off with a relationship, but the relationship starting off wrong hook, the relationship starting off with lies. Be straight up, tell us the truth.
Hundred percent truthful. I'm, I'm a lawyer, um, and everything that never blew up is a hundred percent accurate. I pr- I take pride in my work, and I've been doing this here for last twenty years, and I've worked for three different jurisdictions. I've written probably thousands of those reports, just like it for various jurisdictions, including, uh, now, I, I write them every day for, you know, multiple jurisdictions around here. So, again, that, that is a pretty standard, pretty typical planning report, and that meets all the criteria to show competent substantial evidence to, for this to, uh, be approved, and it shows what is accurate and truthful and brings the truth.
Uh, I mean, I'm looking at another thing she gave the other day, but the building is gonna build housing, like this is who I was referring to, not characterizing the neighborhood. You read that earlier, you read this earlier, I, I mean... Right, I, I'm just like, I don't even know, but hey.
I'm, I'm gonna get it in a minute. I'm gonna say before I make my comment. No, you don't have that, no, I was telling him, I'm gonna wait a minute, and then I'll say what I never said.
My name is Adrian Satchey, and I have two concerns. As Ms. George just pointed out, it's about eight hundred people. Um, we are a historic town, uh, I do not know where eight hundred more cars are gonna go on US forty-one through the historic district. It's not like you can widen forty-one, some.
Quarter acre lots. My concern is the, uh, the number four, which is multifamily by Coach Robinson's house. Um, that is the one, that's the only issue I think is, before we go anywhere, maybe that should just be single-family. Single-family there, I don't have a problem with it, and I think you have somebody who had a single thing, they have a beautiful house. You, it's nice to have, uh, woodland behind you, but as we grow, things have to happen. And so having the fourth piece being a single-family only might be a reasonable look at all of this. The commercial, uh, certainly when it comes to town, comes down to actually building the commercial. Um, Rosemary lives right across Catty Corner from the library. I don't think you wanna put anything more than a professional building there. That seems reasonable, but that comes at the next level. To my way of thinking, yeah, forty-one is the commercial rather. There is no question, it goes all the way to Detroit from, uh, Miami. It's commercial rather. So, having that commercial makes more sense than it being agricultural, because the town is growing at some point. Uh, people wanna come and ride our mountain bike trails. Yeah, that's it. Wanna put bike paths through this property, this, you're not gonna put three hundred houses in there. That's kind of a given, everybody realizes it's not gonna be built to the maximum that the zoning allows. But I think we have to look at it in a reasonable fashion, we're looking at zoning. I just kinda think that maybe we should just have more single-family. The northern section, I don't know who lives across the street on forty-one from the multifamily, is the, uh, the northern end of forty-one? My way of thinking, okay, that's a reasonable place to live, but I don't know, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Grant.
I'm getting ready to leave, I just wanna reiterate the last panel we had held this. Remember how those are started, okay? We all know low housing income brings to a community. If we don't, we should, because everybody's been there and done that. I live directly across Greenfield, Doug lives Kinnicorn plus. So we're all on the same street. We do not want apartments where they're planning on putting these apartments. And then telling you it's gonna bring your housing properties up with that kind of stuff here is not going to, it's gonna decrease the housing properties, okay? My biggest issue with this whole project are the roads, which I stated last time, and the water. The water to the panel and everybody in this town should be the first priority of this whole ordeal, if they decide to zone, to let them build. That should be the number one priority on the list. And don't forget, the construction you're gonna have, like they're saying, it's gonna be months and years and this and that, how long are roads gonna be tore up? There's two ways in and out of this town. I'm not driving along a main jazz road to go to Town Jennings to jump on ten, to jump back to go to Lake City. See what I'm saying? I'm sorry, there ain't, there's two ways out, you hit one thirty-six or you hit forty-one, that's it. So, these are my criterias that I am very, very much concerned about, especially the water. That is my biggest issue, and that should be everybody's priority is the water in this town. Um, and then again, like I said, just remember the crime rate, when you do stuff like this with low housing income, and just remember the property values. If people find out you're a community with low housing income in it, the property values go way down. No matter what they're trying to tell you, they're going up. Now, the only way they're gonna go, again, you can have, I'm all about changing, you can have low-income property in your town. You gotta have better facilities in your town to make the town more attractive, see what I'm saying? Then people don't really look at the low housing income. Oh, like, oh, wait, we got a supermarket here, we got medical facilities, we got whatever, that makes town look a little more attractive.
Right.
But right now, they're trying to get the zoning, and it's like whoever said earlier, once they get it, I think one of your parents said it. They say they can't come in here six months down the road, just start taking over and building what they want, enhancing facilities. All right, y'all have a good night. What's that, Greg, see if you can call again?
Hey, you should stay for one sec. Yeah, I feel like a resource behind the gate, I know what a thoroughfare must feel like trying to bust out. Bonkap Levine, and I represent High Rise, I'm one of the owners of the development company. And it's a privilege to be here tonight to get a chance to talk with you, thank you council for having us. I just wanna address, I just want you to know what we're thinking. And first of all, I first want to say that I've known Greg Bailey and Phil Bishop and Megan Northwater Professional Services for twenty years. They have the highest confidence in their integrity and ability, I don't know anything about the world of life, whatever, I'm just telling you, I'm proud to be associated with them, doing business with them, and we would use them going forward, I just want that on the record as well.
Look forward, I'll win you later.
I will, thank you, I will, seriously. Google knows everything, right? But let me tell you what our thoughts are, and I can't tell you this is what it will end up being. But I do wanna tell you, you know, Walt Disney came in a plane, looked at a swan clan, a- a- and built Disney World, I, I mean, you know, we just have a plan and a thought, but the reason I asked you to stay, my friend, is it's not apartments, I just wanna say, and it's not low-income housing. And, you know, I just want to share with you what I thought was, what attracted us to the project, first of all, was we had a relationship with the seller, and, and it was an off-planting transaction. We thought, this was good, we love White Springs, we've done Hamilton County for twenty years, I know it's the poorest county in the state, I know there's fifteen thousand residents, I know it's a rural community, I know there's a problem attracting first-class quality people to come and work, I know the mine revenue has gone down, I know the jail is the biggest employer, I know, but new businesses coming in to Lake City, to Live Oak, hundreds and thousands of jobs are coming in in the next year or two. And the main problem the county has is people don't have places to live, there are apartments, I'm sure, there are houses here and there, for sure. I do that all the time, accounted by. But there's not, there's not places they can come that they want to live, that they consider acceptable to live. We are building workforce housing, for workforce, for teachers, for, for, for judges who can't, won't come and move in because they have no place to live. For the people who are gonna want to live here, hopefully in White Springs some, Live Oak, Lake City, may, maybe they'll come from Al Dasta. What my friend in the green shirt, hello, thank you, I think he had it wrong, was people want this lifestyle. They want hiking and camping and boating, and, and they wanna work remotely from home, and they would love to drive, they would kill to drive twenty or thirty minutes to work and come home to this haven that you have, with the Stephen Foster Park that we've been through, with the Swatney River, with the campground, with the springs, with the diving. This is a major home run, you're sitting on a coal mine. And, and, and from, from the revenue standpoint, first of all, there's only sixty acres for us, we have no other places, no villages, there's no other land in reference. I will personally commit to you that I will never be involved in buying another piece of property in White Springs the rest of my life, except for the sixty acres. I, I say that from the bottom of my heart, because our plan isn't to take over White Springs, it's not to build the villages, it was, here's this beautiful piece of property. And I'm gonna say exactly what we planned to do with it, but do, but make sure, you understand, this is our intent, these are the phases, there does need to be further market research done. The market may not allow us to make people not, may not wanna buy what we're selling, and, and yeah, then we might have to change it to make it a marketplace. You know, what would, you know, car owner or a dress shop doesn't change inventory if it's not selling, of course you do. So the market will determine a lot of what happens. But I, I want to tell you our plan, first of all, we wanna fit into this community and not change it. We're not here to change it, we're not here to hurt, we're here to help, we believe. So let me tell you what the plan looks like. Phase one, in our mind, ninety single, ninety-six, I'm sorry, ninety-six single-family homes between twelve hundred and fourteen hundred square feet. Possibly, it could be sixteen hundred the most, twelve hundred the least, that's our first plan. Build ninety-six single-family homes, which I think would be on parcel B, and I could have this one. By the way, I'm not the engineer, man, we hire, used to be Bailey Bishop Lane, and then it's North Florida, these guys to do all this stuff. I don't know, I think there's wetlands on the property, by the way, I think there's wetlands on the property, I don't know if it's one acre or a seven acres, we looked at the property, we think there's some wetlands we're gonna have to mitigate, but I, also, I want you to understand, all fairness to, to Brandon and the team, they are giving you a concurrency report. Not a building plan, and, and there's a lot of technical stuff that goes into it that I don't even understand, that's why we pay them to do it. So, phase one, ninety-six single-family homes. After phase one is complete, and mostly sold, we would look to do phase two, now, the order may change. I'm just telling you, these are our thoughts, our plans, our, our, you know, as we're going. Phase two, with the eighty duplexes, eighty-two family homes, uh, between a thousand and twelve hundred square feet. So let's talk population, because that's all the housing we're having. Ninety-six, uh, single-family homes, two people in a home, maybe they got a kid, but we're not worried about the little babies, so we got two hundred people. Then I got eighty duplexes, that's a hundred sixty units, maybe I have two people in there again, so I've got three hundred twenty people, and two hundred, so I got five hundred people coming in, not two thousand. Not five hundred, what's that? Say again?
I know phase two, so what parcel that this going?
Oh, uh, Joe, what parcel would, would the duplexes, they're like split up, right?
D.
I think they're on both, I, I think.
A and D.
I think, and again, this could, this could change, the parcels, I'm gonna even open it, it could change, it could want to be the other parcels this, the other parcels that. So I don't know if your house, but my friend in the blue shirt, when you should, we don't, I, I don't need that for my house. You know, and I respect that, but if your neighbor said that when you were moving in, you wouldn't live where you live. I, I mean, we gotta, we gotta let people, you know, come in, we gotta. God bless, listen, so, so again, the parcels, I don't know if they're gonna channel, the engineer's gonna show, I don't know where the wetlands are, I mean, I think there's some, so we're gonna see. But here's our plan, so that's a duplexes. Third phase, an assisted living facility, a twenty-five thousand square foot, sixty-eight-bed assisted living facility that will bring jobs and, and revenue and income, and I think you guys would want, oh my gosh, my mother's eighty-seven years old, I'm looking for facilities for her. I, I mean, you know, this, this should be an amazing thing. And by the way, those sixty-eight people, I don't count them as, you know, coming and going, because really, you know, the van is gonna take them from here to there, but they're not coming and going, they're living in the facility. The last part, phase four, which in my mind is, is the least important part, but needs to be here, is the commercial. Four or five commercial stores, two thousand square feet each, fronting forty-one, for businesses that are, are serving the community, not just sixty acres, but also the community. Isn't a little restaurant, isn't a beauty salon, something that fits in the, in the neighborhood. That is the plan for this property, again, I'm not swearing that's what's gonna happen, I'm not promising, but I'm telling you, that's our intent, that's what we, we've sketched out in our minds, and yeah, it's way too preliminary to come and bring it to you guys, and, and we're not, because we first have to see the zoning change. But we've thought about it, we've thought about, here's the property, here's the, this is so preliminary, I'm scared to give it to you, it could change a hundred times. I can do this, and here, here's the phases, phase one to ninety-six, phase two, phase three, phase four. So, in our minds, you know, I'm a marketing guy, I, I'm an advertising major out of Syracuse, and a TV production guy, and an entrepreneurial business guy, I've done a lot of real estate. But in my mind, the appeal for people to be able to come into White Springs to integrate into your community, to bring revenue, ladies and gentlemen, fifty million dollars of property value will go on that property if this plan comes in. Fifty million, of which Hamilton County will receive a million dollars a year in taxes, of which White Springs will receive three hundred thousand per year. That is a fact based on the current village. Now, I don't think this is taking fifteen to twenty-five years to build that, I'll be broke if it does. I would say, I, I represent investors, and we have, you know, investors in the company, I'm, I'm a part of it. I don't think this is gonna take fifteen or twenty-five years, maybe, I mean, and, and I hear what you're saying about the water and this, I don't know anything about that. I know as the developers, we're responsible, I know that I paid North Florida Professional Services, they take us through the steps, and each step, they say, to the lawyers, you gotta do this, they deal with, it's like river water management, they deal with all these things, and, and eventually it gets done. I think from a marketing standpoint, first of all, we'd love to offer the people White Springs the first opportunity to move into those houses. I don't know if you're gonna, I can tell you what they're gonna cost, I'll tell you right now what I think they're gonna cost in today's market. By the time we go for the shovel in the ground, and, and there's a house two years later, could it be twice as much or half as much, I don't know. But I would estimate today that the single-family homes will be two hundred thousand and change. That will be the single-family home that, that somebody can get a ten percent, five percent thing, that there are ship, that it's a hero program, there's the ship program. There, there's a program in, in the senate now, a bill coming in to help with housing assisting for this very reason. So I think that the duplexes will go in the hundreds, so it's a hundred thousand and change, is it a hundred twenty? So if it's a hundred thousand and change, is it a hundred twenty, a hundred sixty, I can't tell you. It'll be based on square foot. I don't know yet what the square footage is. This is workforce housing, not low-income, not high, workforce housing. That is what that piece of property will look like. Now, by the way, you know, we could have just bought the property without commenting anybody, chopped it into ten parcels, eight parcels, whatever the zoning is, and sold them off. And, you know, made a couple of bucks, it's gone on the way. We're in this to make money. I mean, I, I don't want to kid you, I mean, that's what developers do.
I was scared to hide here, it's common and known, it's built to try to make money off of the building.
The nerve of people. The nerve of people, the nerve of trying to make a profit in their business.
Let me say this. What you're saying, beautiful, look.
Thank you.
But this is what you're not saying, okay? What you see, that's the overstaff. This is my sewer plant director.
Right.
My water plant director.
Yep.
And my utilities director.
Yep.
Now, when you're bringing these wonderful people, we're gonna have to hire people. Your water bills ain't gonna be enough for me to hire somebody to run that wastewater plant.
Three hundred thousand a year isn't enough.
Excuse me?
Three hundred thousand bucks a year isn't enough.
Well, guess what? This town don't even have a full-time fire department. How many go put a fire department? Three hundred thousand? I mean, we barely got a part-time fire department. So guess what, we took three hundred thousand, I can have a full-time fire department. But we don't have a police department. So now your, your residents, you're bringing more people here, we don't have a police department. But wait a minute. I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking at, as financially, how you gonna purchase, you know? Okay, we got, he at the water plant. Who at the sewer plant? That's twenty-four seven, we need two people at the sewer plant. Now, our water plant director, he not gonna cut grass all over anymore, because he gonna run that water plant. So now I need a sewer plant, I need somebody to back up my sewer plant, and I need somebody to cut grass at the sewer plant. Because we got two utilities. Call the governor, tell him to give us some money.
For your guys, I mean, the city needs.
We got two people to work. We got one on forty-one. We get paid by DOT. Y'all see him, he's on forty-one. The other one is on the side, that's it. Now, when he is not at the sewer plant, or the water plant, he gonna get on the lawnmower and help his guys. We need equipment, and if you're bringing apartments, we're gonna need more than one fire truck.
It's not apartment, it's housing.
Excuse me?
It's not apartment, it's a town.
If you, when you, listen, all that is great.
Okay.
But we still need the staff to be able to assist you. We got one lady coming on service, get, trying to get water bills out, trying to take your payments, trying to do everything. What I'm saying is, all that sounds beautiful. But we can't do it with, uh, one person running two major facilities.
I don't know how to answer that, honestly, I want to just share.
So that's my.
What I do want to say, thank you, I do want to say, with eight hundred people, almost eight hundred people. You know, we're telling you, we don't have the current resources to even have the quality of life we want for the eight hundred people that are here.
Thank you.
So the only way we're gonna get it, it don't have to be me, it doesn't have to be this project. But the only way we can get it is to some change. We all look death, insanity, repeating the same behavior and expecting different results. So something's gotta change. I'm talking about three hundred thousand, after it's built down, not the first year, I'm talking about total. So, and answer question, I think three to five years. You know, I'd be delighted to be built down to three, and I think five at the lowest, but, you know, that's my thought. So then there's three hundred thousand coming in, it could start, hey, a policeman, it's forty thousand a year.
Is that full value, a full value?
Say again?
Is that full value, how so? Or is that included?
That's it, the price is, I told you, that the house is down.
I mean, I mean, your tax base, is that included home state exemption, and exemption?
I don't know, Keith, that dog knows, Keith, he can tell me if that's, when it comes back. The home state exemption, twenty-five thousand. So that's that.
But if you married, it's fifty.
That's right, that's right.
And if you say the baby, it's a hundred percent.
I'll ask you what comes back, I think you can add that. So let's get to that, but I'll forgive you only get two hundred fifty thousand a year, I know it's terrible. And I'm just kidding, just joking. But listen, you know, so, so I think I've answered the question of what we plan to do in one. White Springs is a major attraction to people, a lifestyle's a major attraction. And maybe you say, we don't want anybody here. I said, that's a very individual thing, you know, I respect that, I might not agree, but, you know, people are coming in, there's growth coming everywhere, it's all around you, why not capitalize on it? And, 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 you know, be able, like he said, to be able to determine what comes in. Tell me a better use for the property. It's not that, I'm being half-assed, I'm serious now. Um, it's for sale. You guys buy it and do what you want. Send me a check, in, in seven days, I'll give you a fair price on the property. I'll walk away with a little money, I'll walk away. Is anybody gonna write me a check? No. I sell it to you at the ten thousand dollar acre, six hundred thousand bucks, right now, the property's for sale. Do I have a buyer?
I think you, you, then I say they don't want growth.
Well, but, but so.
Finally, it got, it got.
Yes, but, but all we're saying, and, and I really, I understand, and, and I, I, my friend who talks so eloquently about the, the town, I understand, but what I think you, you maybe missed is what Brandon, and Megan, and Patrick, and Tomo had talked about today.
They did anything, he heard it all.
Well, is they're saying, this is zoning. We're talking about rezoning. And then we have to compensate, so you guys have the ability. If we can't provide the water, if we can't pay for it, building infrastructure, we can't build the project. It's, Joe knows it, it's Joe. I mean, it, you know, it's just that simple. So you do have, that, you know, we have to meet these requirements. We have to be able to provide for fire and roads, and take care of, you know, Mrs. Rhodes, so the setbacks are right in her road on forty-one. If we can't do all that, we can't build. If our dead city is wrong, we're not gonna be able to build. Water, that's what's not gonna let us build, you're not gonna let us build any permits. We understand that. All we're saying is that, let's rezonate, so we have the opportunity to come before you and present our plans, that we're gonna be paying for the growth, not you to get you all the stuff you want to get. It doesn't matter if it's Jack or Iris, it could be the next guy, next guy. So, you know, I apologize that you guys got off on the wrong foot. Uh, really, I apologize for that. I know that at the time Brandon spoke to you in the last meeting, he was not aware of the contract between us and the principals of BBF. So when, he said he didn't know, he really didn't know. It was a deal I had made with Greg Bailey and Phil Bishop, and it was a five-year, and, you know, Brandon wasn't pretty to that at that time. He was just presenting the stuff to you. So I don't think there was any intent to mislead you. The, the posting of the signs, you know, that was just.
That's not normal.
No, 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 but wait, wait. But all I want to say, last thing, and I promise I'm gonna go through. That's what a preacher always says, right, when he wants to keep going on a half hour.
No, we did a very good.
All right, listen, the last thing is that they don't know how to deal, you know, you, you guys don't have the planners and stuff, so it is a little bit of a unique situation. So my suggestion is that you pray about it, you know, think about it, and, you know, give, give them a yes or no, what you want to do. But I've told you straight up what our intent is, exactly what we plan to do. It is subject to change based on what happens in market conditions. But that has been our plan from day one. Last thing I'll tell you is the guy sitting there, in the black and white Joseph Sapolli, is a designer of international renown, the guy is awesome. His job, he's also a partner in, in the company. His job is to design this project that will fit into the, the culture, and the look, and the feel of White Springs. What we don't want to do is put something in there that looks stupid. You know, some of the towns, when McDonald's comes in, they say, you can't put in your McDonald's, because it doesn't fit with our town. But you can make it look like our town, and then you can put it in. So we want to fit it in and make it designed so that it is unique, a project that can be proud of. Some people are gonna be blessed to live in, happy to live in, and live happily ever after. That's our intent, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Nicole.
I, I do have a question. You were saying that ninety-six single-family homes, most single families are two-point, five, two-point, well, you're two parents, well, at least one child is a single family?
Sure.
So that's already two hundred, three, almost three hundred people.
Yeah, I don't count the kids.
I, I count the kids, the kids are people. My first, my first issue was, you said you want to bring first-class citizens, White Springs is already full.
First-class what?
First-class citizens.
You said.
What did I say?
You said that you wanted to bring first-class citizens to this town, workforce and citizens.
Workforce housing.
And if you're interrupting, don't interrupt.
That's my, I said, please, not interrupt what I'm talking about.
Now, White Springs is full of first-class citizens. We have eight hundred, well, seven hundred in some first-class citizens, seven, eight, six, or something like that, first-class citizens. When, everybody from the beginning, starting with Ms. Carter, when we asked her, when I was on the council back in October, November, December, whenever it was that she came, we asked her what was the plan. She said she didn't know. She didn't, but you are one of the owners of these companies, or partners, however you want to see yourself. You know what you're planning to do and when you do it. It don't matter if she got nothing to do with it, so for both companies, or for all of them.
She was not happy to bite you.
Excuse me, I'm talking.
But you're not talking accurately, I just want you to know.
No, I'm saying what was said in the meeting that I was here, all of our meetings are recorded.
She didn't know at the time.
She didn't know.
And she didn't know, neither.
So she didn't know.
But they said they didn't know, and he said phase one was not included. She right.
But, so I am right, correct? So, okay, I'm just making sure I'm not right.
I told you Greg Bailey and Phil Bishop, not Megan, not Brandon.
So nobody but, um, Megan and Bishop knew what was going on.
You only two people, I suppose.
Okay, and when did you start thinking about the project?
About the project?
Yeah. How long ago this been?
Four, six months ago, probably, four months, six months.
So that's right around the time that she came for the rezoning, right?
No, that's, she came in October, eight months, so he said four, six, four months ago. He was talking about what? April, May, June, oh, probably May.
Anyway, what I'm saying is, if you do approve this rezoning, I think it needs to be redone, the resolutions need to be done. None of them should be high-density, because we're not equipped for high-density. And if you approve it for them to do, I know one of the resolutions I read said twenty, um, units per acre. You can say what you want, but I know I read that.
This was twenty units.
Yeah, one of them said high-density, twenty lots per acre. That's a lot of dollars on people. Which tells me that you're either, you're saying it's gonna be affordable housing, which is gonna be affordable, but who?
Workforce.
Well, he said it.
Okay, so a lot of people in workforce, this people are working at McDonald's as part of the workforce.
I told you.
Are they gonna be able to afford some of these houses?
I told you.
Are the citizens that live here now, once they get out of high school, and some, you know, it's like you're trying to smokescreen the citizens here in the council to make it be, you're saying what you think it's going to be, oh, well, this is what it, but it can change. So if we approve it for this, then you can turn right back around and change it and put just what we approved with this resolution, or with the rezoning, with these resolutions and ordinances that y'all wrote up, you can go ahead and do very much what that says. And then we would have a time going back trying to change it. So no, if you, you have the option to say no, because it's not gonna be a great fit for the community, um, you have that option to say no. You have the option to approve it also, but if you want to approve it, I think you should go back, reread it, and change it, and do not do any high-density, because we're not equipped for anything high-density. And if they really want to bring anything positive here, they'll do it anyway with the moderate and low-density. We don't need all of those people, because you're already talking about four hundred, five hundred people. Anyway, y'all, y'all make such a big deal about Vanessa saying nine hundred people, but you're not too far from it. And that's just with two of the phases. So no, I, I, I do want growth here, but it's a certain time, type of growth. If I wanted to live in the city, I'd be in Tampa, Miami, Jacksonville, somewhere like that. I like small town. Do you know why this town is so special? Because we're all one family. Everybody here gets along, everybody here, we might not always agree, but we agree to disagree. But we all get along. We don't have people around here homeless and all of this. If there is somebody here that's in need, we got people that's gonna feed you, because we're a one-close-knit family. We want to keep that close-knit family atmosphere. That's what makes White Springs so great, because we're a small town, and we enjoy being a small town. Not saying we can't stand a couple of stores. A couple of stores would be great. You want to put a beauty shop here? Please. You want to put an assisted-living facility here? Please do that. But all of these houses and housing things that you're talking about, we don't want all of that here. You want to put a couple of houses here, all right, put a couple of houses here. But a hundred houses, a hundred units, two hundred units, ninety-six units, that is too much for this small town, and it would change what our town is. And we would no longer be this great, wonderful, small, close-knit town. Everybody here knows everybody here. You know who, where, when strangers are in town, we know when strangers are here. We know what to look for, we know when it's suspicious, a suspicious car riding around. You bring five hundred new people here, ain't nobody gonna know where. Because you're gonna have all of these new people, you don't know what backgrounds they're from, what, you're not gonna know anything about them, but you're bringing all these new people here. Not saying it's new people are bad, because it's a lot of people that's been here less than twenty years, but these are great people.
Twenty years.
And they, and they fit in perfectly in our little, small, close-knit, family community. I don't agree with the ninety-six, and how you try to downplay the amount of people that you're going to do. And that's just my opinion.
Thank you, I think I was asking, thank you for your opinion.
All right, thank you. So, um, we're gonna close the workshop, and open up for the White Springs Special Council Meeting to, um, decide on these resolutions. Um, does anybody on the council have anything they want to say first? Then I'll turn it over to Vanessa, and if her from the citizens.
No, ma'am, he needs to recognize that Mary Berry is on the council now.
Oh, yeah, she'll, she'll put that into, she came in late. Yeah, she always knows in the minutes what time she is.
Such a close one, and opening line, and didn't roll again.
Thank you. All right, so we're opening the White Springs Regular Time Council, well, Special Meeting, um, tonight on Tuesday, August fifteenth, at zero five P M. And I'm going to do a roll call now for the new meeting, since I called it to order. Uh, Kizzi Burge, present.
Yunito? Here.
Mary Berry, present. Jacqueline Williams, and Anita Rivers, present, will continue. We have a form for the meeting to, um, vote on what to do about this zoning change. Now, I'm just, does anybody have anything to say on the council?
I do.
Okay.
I heard everything, and I wish that she would have came first, um, to speak with the citizens regarding. Um, I do want growth. For White Springs, we all deserve growth. I mean, we are, we have grandkids, we have children, things of that nature. But my whole issue is, like I said earlier, the town council needs to have the privilege to actually hire a planner. So the planner can guide us and walk us through the legal ramifications of what we need to do. We have an attorney, yes we do, but I don't think our attorney, our attorney is a zoner, or that's his specialty, man. So I really feel like, Madam Mary, that is something we need to take into consideration before we, I'm not saying we need to say no, yeah, I'm not, what I'm saying is, we need to take into consideration that we do not have the adequate guidance to make a decision on this at this time.
Anybody else? Vanessa?
I have been, um, trying to, you know, seek out planners for the town. Um, even if the town had a plan that's zoning, they still gonna need somebody to guide them. And we need to update our LDRs, because they're from nineteen ninety-eight. I spoke with someone today that looked pretty positive, and I would like to, um, continue speaking with them
I spoke with someone today that looked pretty positive, and I would like to continue speaking with them and possibly get a couple quotes and present them to the town. And definitely put in the budget, definitely, thank you.
I just want to say, well, Joel, you have company.
I just want to make sure the process is understood, you're gonna need to have the public hearing. Take comment, close out for each one of them, go to market.
All right, so that's all the comments?
Oh, I also want to devote an impact on the school system too, because if you have children, you don't have schools, so you don't have, it's in Hamilton County, Hamilton County.
No, but, no, 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 they do, they have, they have.
Oh, yeah, 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 I do need, yeah.
The bus is full right now, they have to have a second bus to come here. Because the bus is full. Well, they have to do their entire route, because right now it goes, picks up, my daughter's the first stop on White Springs. Picture up, I went around to White Springs.
Ma'am, you have to wait, we're in a meeting now, it's not a regular workshop, you have to ask for the floor.
Mayor, I ask you just a procedural question, I want to talk about, well, we've already talked about, just have a procedural question.
Okay.
You want to come up?
No, you, it's fine, whatever.
It's our understanding you're gonna take each ordinance separately, you're gonna take action tonight on each one, correct?
On the four zoning resolutions.
Correct, you're gonna take action.
Right.
Okay. Well, it depends on what'll happen.
Right.
Well, there's four land use, four zoning, four non-plant, and then there's four.
Okay, then we'll do any. You guys won't leave here tonight without each of them being considered.
I just wanted, there should be four resolutions for the land use, four resolutions for zoning, and four ordinances for the land use, and four ordinances for zoning, so it'd be eight public hearings. And I would, I would, I would go ahead and proceed, but I would just want to clarify.
All right, so I'm gonna open up for a public hearing to hear, we're gonna start with the LPA's resolution number. Open up the workshop, the hearing, public hearing. For Resolution Number PZ slash LPA Z 2023 dash 01. If you'll read that. The title.
A resolution to Town Council of the Town of White Springs, Florida, serving as the Planning and Zoning Board of the Town of White Springs, Florida, and the local planning agency of the Town of White Springs, Florida. Recommending to the Town Council of the Town of White Springs, Florida, approval of the rezoning to the official zoning atlas of the Town of White Springs Land Development Regulations as amended pursuant to an application by the property owner, said acreage providing for rezoning from agriculture to residential multiple family. Two of certain lands within the Town of White Springs, Florida repealing all resolutions in conflict and providing.
All right, any comments on your public? Anyone like to speak for or in, in the public?
Mayor, just for, for record, because I have to give this in the record, this is not a public hearing. I'd like to enter all my testimonies from the workshop, I'd also like to enter all my staff reports for the proposals. I'd like to enter all the signatures that was submitted. And that would be my complete substantial evidence for basis of proof.
Like it, Mayor, Patrick Ruchowski, I just wanted, for the record, to point out that there is no planner on staff, no planning and zoning board as required by the charter, and that the council is taking action on these matters in its capacity as council, there's nothing in the charter that provides for the council acting as planning and zoning board. So I just want to make sure that that's on the record, thank you.
Would it be possible for you to say which parcel this is being referenced to? It's easier for us to understand.
Mr. Sebbs, you know which one, 01 relates to 2023-01?
We just said parcel number 800, not the 01.
So the way they were structured, and the way the, and the ordinance numbers and resolution numbers, they were done by parcel. So parcel A would be the first ones, then it's parcel B, then parcel C, then parcel D. So procedurally, if it's 2023 dash 01, that would be parcel A. And then the corresponding should be, there should be a CPA 2023-01, and a LPA 2023-01, and then 01 together.
I don't want to rehash the entire workshop, so I'll just get right to the point. I don't think the population density of these multi-family, figuring with White Springs for a number of reasons. So in my opinion, it should be a vote against, and in a ideal world, they could resubmit with a medium density designation.
Any other comments? All right, we're gonna close the public hearing. Open another public hearing. Okay, we're gonna do each one equally.
We can't do them like in a.
Well, no, no, go ahead, thank you.
All right, so. We're back into the meeting. What is the pleasure for, well, I'm just gonna say, based on the information and my lack of knowledge in planning and zoning, I would recommend that we table it.
If, if, okay, so if you want to table it, procedurally, you need to take a date cert, and we will, just like we did last time, we would not have a public hearing. If that's, I, that's first I really, if we're not interested in that. I don't know, the applicant is, at great expense, would there be an objection to table it? There would be. Okay, procedurally, they would like.
I'm not gonna be bullied into being, rushing into a public and threatened to be sued and all of that. I mean, it is what it is, you can do what you're gonna do, but I'm gonna do the right thing for my citizens, and I say to table this. Okay, so I'll make the motion that we table Resolution Number 2023 dash 01, PZ LPA. I definitely want to say that.
Until, yeah, we need to get a date, yet again, I'm sorry.
Yet again, I will not be rushed.
No, ma'am.
Uh, November. Even on the 21st. November 21st, is that a good day for everybody, that's Thanksgiving week? So then, November 27th, 28th, is that a good day? The week after Thanksgiving?
All of Monday?
Tuesday, November 28th. Is that okay? All right, can I call for, uh, we got a vote on this, let's finish this one. So we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on the motion? Close and table, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so I'm just gonna call for a motion to table the other seven resolutions.
Is there a call for resolution number?
And the resolution numbers are Resolution Number PZ that. Resolutions, yeah, you can.
Resolution PZ slash LPA Z 2023 dash 02. Resolution Number PZ LPA Z 2023 dash 03. Resolution Number PZ LPA Z 2023 dash 04. Resolution Number LPA slash CPA 2023 dash 01. Resolution Number PZ LPA CPA 2023-02. Resolution Number PZ LPA CPA 2023-03, and Resolution Number PZ LPA CPA 2023-03. The motion is to table until November 28th.
So, and the motion is.
The motion made.
I see the group's set, and it's a discussion. All those that say aye, aye, any opposed? We didn't return, you don't seem to.